...session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is 6:30. I'm calling the meeting to order. We have a full dais tonight and a full agenda, so hang in there with us. It could be a long night. With us this evening, we have Jessica Garcia Solis. If you would step forward and turn around and face the audience, I'm going to talk about you. Jessica is a senior, and Councilmember Ennis, I am so sad to tell you that she will be attending A&amp;M University in the fall. And biomedical sciences, she's going to be pre-med, so let's have a round of applause for Jessica. And with her tonight is Maritza Gutierrez, and she'll stand up and we'll talk about her. She is also a senior. Both of these young ladies attend our CIRCA campus, and Maritza is going to be at UT El Paso, Councilmember Ennis, UT El Paso, and she's going to be a nursing major. Let's have a round of applause for Maritza. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please rise, these two young ladies are going to join, are going to lead us in both pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And ladies and gentlemen, if you will remain standing, we are going, our invitation is going to be led by Chaplain Robert Oliver.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for these leaders and these elected officials as they come together to lead and guide our community. We pray for wisdom, pray for your protection and your blessing upon the city of Bastrop. Thank you for all these people here and their interests that they represent as well. Pray they would get a fair and honest hearing. Pray that you would continue to promote unity and progress and godliness in this community. We ask this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much, Chaplain. We really appreciate the services that you provide the police academy. As the, as the ladies are leaving, I'll let you, want to remind everyone that our Colorado River Collegiate Academy that we lovingly call CIRCA at BISD, many of those kids are able to graduate high school with an associate's degree in hand when they graduate, so really proud of those young ladies. Okay, we are on item 4A, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing the city of Bastrop as a Purple Heart city. I have asked the Mayor Protem, as a veteran, if he would read this proclamation.
Please step forward. All right. Proclamation of the city of Bastrop, Texas, whereas the people of Bastrop, Texas have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in armed forces, and, excuse me, whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military declaration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by George Washington in 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the armed, I'm sorry, the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with the declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the contribution sacrifices of men and women from Bastrop, Texas, who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces. And whereas November 11th, 2018, has officially been designated as the day in Bastrop, Texas, to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. Now by the signature of the mayor, the city of Bastrop is proclaimed a Purple Heart city. And I'm awarding this, or presenting this to Carl Reese as an outstanding Purple Heart recipient. Sit over here, please. You'll get, you'll get a picture. And unbeknownst to us, Carl has a presentation he'd like to make.
On behalf of the Texas Capitol Chapter 1919 of the Military Order, the Purple Heart, I want to thank the council for recognizing and proclaiming Bastrop, Texas a Purple Heart city, and I'd like to present the council for Bastrop, Texas, this special recognition award for your patriotism and recognition of our combat wounded veterans.
Sorry about that. Okay, we are moving on to item 4B, the mayor's report. I have a couple things before we shift to the next item. One is many of us, it's with mixed emotions, we've got some kind of good news and bad news. Chief Wobus, our first full-time paid fire chief, his last day is going to be on Friday. He has taken a job as the training captain at Leander. This is a custom-made job. Chief Wobus is excellent at training. It's exactly what he wanted to do, so we're going to miss him, but I did want to recognize him, and I'd like to have a round of applause for Chief Wobus. I also have an announcement. BEDC let their, Bastrop Economic Development Corporation had a press release recently announcing Mike Camerlander as their new director, and he will start on September 17th. That's a real key position for the community, and we're thrilled to have that position filled, so I wanted to recognize him, and I'm sure once he starts, he'll be a frequent person that we see at our city council meetings. I was going to announce the Visit Bastrop new executive director, but I don't want to steal Mr. Howard's thunder, so I will keep that one under wraps. Then the other thing I wanted to, some of you may remember back on Tuesday, August 21st, which was a week ago, but feels like a long, long time ago, there was an apprehension of an escaped felon from Lee County. You may be able to run from Lee County, but you're going to get caught when you get to the city of Bastrop. And Chief Altgeld wanted me to thank the multi-jurisdictions that worked together, Lee County Sheriff, DPS, Bastrop County Sheriff, BISD Police, and the Bastrop Police Department. But the most important thing is the recently promoted Sergeant Christopher Chavez did the tackle on the soccer field, so let's have a round of applause for Bastrop. And yes, his mom works here at City Hall, and she's been walking off the floor. She is very, very proud of her son, and we're proud of him as well. If you go to the next item, or the next, if you'll shift one, you'll see some pictures of what I have been up to the first couple weeks of August. In the upper left, yes, that is Councilmember Ennis putting his longhorn in front of Mayor Protem Nelson's A&amp;M insignia on his shirt on the homecoming parade. I'm there with Representative John Sirier and County Judge Paul Poppy, but, and it doesn't show up very well, but I am in the picture right below that. I was, I was the nerd drum major in high school, and it was so awesome when the drum majors from Bastrop High School Band asked if they could take a picture with me, and I said, only if I get a picture too. So that's me with the band, I was pretty happy about that. It was a long day. We did the homecoming parade that morning, I went to the sports reception at the convention center, then there was the 4H cake auction, those kids made some phenomenal cakes. I then was at the pecan park celebration and got to do a ride in a really cool automobile. They had some food trucks out there, the pecan park opening was really nice, and yes, by the end of the day, I was at Art After Dark. You notice I'm not standing too close to them, it had been a really long, long day. The LCL, the LSLC visit where the kids that went to summer camp at the Little Sheep Learning Center came to City Hall to find out what a mayor does and what goes on at City Hall, and just had a great time with those kids, it was really neat to have them. Went to the Chamber after hours, and the BISD convocation was a sight to behold, and I'm disappointed that I don't have the close-up picture of Superintendent Barry Edwards dancing like a maniac, but he is in that picture with all of the other principals. The police promotions that you see there, that was Clint Nagy was appointed to Assistant Chief of Police, and there were three people that were promoted to the rank of sergeant, Ryan Preston, Christopher Chavez, and Vicki Stefanik, and I was so honored to be a part of that. I believe we have a full council and city manager, the full dais was at that promotion. Several of us went to the Restore the F4. If you don't know the story about the plane being, some would say stolen, some would say being returned to its rightful position here in Bastrop, it's a great story, you need to ask somebody about it. And I went to a ribbon cutting at the fast aid urgent care. The next slide will show you the things that I did between August 17th and tonight. In lieu of the length of the agenda, we won't go through those, and if you go to the next item, here's what I plan on doing starting tomorrow and getting through September 11th. So I try to be out and about, it's always in the agenda packet, and come join me anytime. If you see an item on there, I'm trying to attend those. Now we are moving on to the next agenda item, 4C. Councilmember Jones, do you have an update?
Well, I want to mention that Friday night is Bastrop's first football game at Memorial Stadium. Super excited about football season starting, huge football fan. Also, we did interviews last night for the new committee members. We interviewed the new applicants and the existing applicants, and it was really awesome. The new ones, we found out about them and what they were wanting to bring to the city, and the existing applicants told us what they wanted to, wanted us to do for them, and I really liked that. So that was the first time we've ever done that, and I think that that was something that Linda and Connie came up with, and I appreciate it, it was, it was really good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm council liaison to the Fairview Cemetery Advisory Board. I attended their meeting on, last week on Wednesday, the 22nd. The board received a presentation from Mindy Bonin Amatera Environmental. We have just gotten through truthing the ground out at, in the old section of the cemetery to find vacant plots. It was an extraordinary presentation and wonderful job they did. I cannot remember how many vacant areas they've, they've designated, but just the, here the process alone was fascinating. They heard a presentation on the financial report for the cemetery fund and a presentation for the fiscal year 2019 budget, and talked about some minor changes to the cemetery ordinance and planned their meeting, next meeting for October 24th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Mayor Protem Nelson?
I just want to tag on to what Councilmember Jones said about the volunteers that have set forth to our boards and commissions. I just want to publicly acknowledge my appreciation for them willing to set aside their time and attention to these important projects.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rogers?
I want to say thank you to that, too. That was a great presentation with the volunteers coming to the board, so thank you again for setting that up for the new interviews.
Excellent. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, Mayor. Just very briefly, I just want to say, along with the proclamation that was read by Mayor Protem, just wanted to just keep the McCain family in your thoughts and prayers. Senator John McCain just passed away, and also our beloved Arita Franklin, that's Alaya.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Peterson. City Manager, do you have anything to report? Okay, we are on item 4E, receive update and presentation on the upcoming Cultural Arts Master Plan, Public Engagement Process. Sarah, are you going to introduce Lynn, or is it just, oh, Colin? Mr. Guerra?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Yes, this is an update and presentation on the Cultural Arts Master Plan and specifically the public engagement process. Lynn Osgood and her team Go Collaborative have been working very hard, as has the, the task force, which are representatives from around Bastrop, and she's going to give you an update, so without further ado, Lynn Osgood.
Thank you, Colin. Welcome, Ms. Osgood.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, councilmembers and mayors, for, I know you have a busy schedule tonight, but we want to give you a quick update on where we are in the Cultural Arts Master Plan process. We're just through with the discovery phase of the process. Can you, okay, is this better? Okay. And, let's see, Ms. Osgood, the secretary has the, Madam Secretary, City Secretary has the clicker, if you would like to control your own destiny. Do you want her to do it, or do you want? So just to orient, our goal for the, creating the plan is really to give a roadmap for the city on how they can leverage the opportunities that are in front of them to really protect the authenticity that is central to Bastrop's identity, and at the same time to harness the power of the arts to meet broad city and community goals and meet national best practices, because the world of arts and the growing arts economy that's taking place across the nation is in fact shifting, so we need to shift with that. Now, what we discovered in our early discovery phase of looking at the cultural economy in the city and the area is that Bastrop's cultural economy is very strong. In fact, one out of seven Bastrop residents earns some part of their income in creative expression, creative industries. In particular, we looked at the years of 2012 to 2016, and there was, the top growth areas were photography, there's a 20% growth, chefs, head chefs and cooks, they were, also they were up at 18%. And, and design, this was interesting, both graphic design and interior design were very high, which makes sense in relationship to Austin, but I think you can assume that those, those particular sectors are going to be, continue to grow. Also, it's worth noting that Bastrop's cultural economy is stronger than, than the average in Texas or the nation. So it means as we start this process, it's starting from a very strong base, and there are points to leverage. Oh, okay. Now particularly, normally when we go into a city and we do these processes, there's, we go from a strategy of public engagement, and we usually go through a discovery phase, and then we do a series of two community meetings, first just to get an orientation, and then to hone in on some specific ideas. But there were two things that came up that we found that we decided we really needed to change this strategy. One of them is in recognition of the fact that Bastrop has a very central core of residents that has done amazing work at forming the infrastructure and the cultural economy that exists today. Outside of that core, there are a lot of people that aren't connected to that conversation, and we want to make sure as we're planning, as we're coming up with policies, programs, ideas for different initiatives, that we're connecting with those folks. We also know nationally that city meetings are harder and harder for folks to get to, and if there's an issue that's not, say, on fire, that maybe it won't get that top priority. So what we're going to do with that is we've totally changed our engagement strategy. A couple of the things that we'll be doing, we'll be going out and attending some different denominational services to make sure that we're connecting with the broad segment of the, of residents, including Macedonia First Baptist, a couple of the Catholic Church. I will be speaking also with, on Thursday with Pastor Nava at the Soup Kitchen. We will continue to do interviews and focus groups, those will continue with some of the core stakeholders. We're also going to do pop-up events, particularly on September 7th and 8th, and we'll be putting a list of those on the city website later this week, where we'll be going to Senior Center, HEB, Art Walk, and being there with, we have a survey, we'll be asking folks, most centrally, what is, what is arts and cultural expression for them? Is it singing in a church choir? Is it making annual family festival, or gatherings with specific foods that to them mean home, and to them means their community? And we want to know what those are, and so that the city, we can best focus the city's energy at supporting the broad segment of residents. We're also going to be holding a couple of workshops. One of the major trends today in arts is a, is a trend called creative placemaking, where the arts come in specifically to help with broad community goals. So it's not just about one performance, or one event, or one piece of art per se, but it's about bringing artists into community development conversations. Those are very broad conversations, we want to bring a lot of people to the table, we want to bring folks from the arts community and the why, and, and businesses, all together at one table to say, hey, what could we do that would really harness the power of the arts to help with community development goals? We'll be doing surveys, and then what we're very excited about is we'll be working with two elementary schools to do potlucks. In this, we'll be working with kids to make postcards that ask them, how do you express yourself? How do you, where do you want to see art in your neighborhood? And on that postcard will also be information for a school potluck, where we'll celebrate the kids' arts, their music, and we're going to be working with the principals. We'll invite the, the kids and their families to an event, an arts, a kid's arts event, and in addition to celebrating the kids and their own expression, we'll also be talking with their, their folks, their, their parents, and asking them the same questions we'll be asking of everyone. Where is it that you find your own point of personal expression? How is, where do you see arts in the community? Where do you want to see it? Do you want to be more active with your neighborhood association and making things in your neighborhood? How can we figure out how the city can help? And then we'll be, in October, November, and December, we'll be drafting recommendations and hopefully coming back to you by the end of the year with the plan. Yeah, and that's the schedule, so happy for to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Osgood. Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Osgood? Included in the packet for Council and for the public was the, is it final now, the 20 pages?
When I read it the first time, it was. Yeah, that was an interim report, and part of that information will become part of the final plan.
Okay, because I had read it as a draft and made comments, and I, so I had seen that. So there's additional information in the packet if anyone has, wants to find out additional information.
There it is.
Any other questions? Oh, Councilmember Jones?
I just wanted to ask you, what other communities have you done these cultural art plans?
We've worked in Austin, we've worked in Minnesota, and in California. Done some, also worked some around the Waco area as well.
Ms. Osgood, the stakeholders that you've met with, and you have a pretty big, well-represented task force that I think has put in quite a bit of time with you.
We're very lucky, yeah.
Protem?
Yes, ma'am. On, in your public engagement process paper, where you talk about the evaluation of success, you're, one of, one of the matrix is the number of people who attend. I'd like to, I think it might be helpful if we had a breakdown of who's attending, it's not, because oftentimes when you go to a public hearing, it's, it's staff and consultants, it's all there. I'd like to, I'd like to see what the breakdown is. The attendees why they're there, are they just interested parties, are they stakeholders? Are they staff? Are they artists, or artist representatives? So I, I think that might behoove all of us if we had that.
Yeah, we always make notes, particularly in terms of demographics, to make sure that, you know, that we're looking broadly at the demographics of the city and that who we're talking to, to make sure that we're not, we're, if we're missing any gaps.
Sweet, thank you. And then on the, on the issue relative to the, the duties and responsibilities of various parties, I'd like to, and this may be more for staff, but I'd like to see a clear delineation between those tasks, those soft costs that are being attributed to the city as opposed to the costs that are going to the Go Collaborative, so we can make a determination of how much the investment the city's making into the, into the project.
Oh, very good, okay.
Okay. And then one final question, again, for, this may be for staff to answer, what role is, is our Visit Bastrop and BEDC playing in it? So are they part of the stakeholder group? I was, I was unclear when I read it.
Yeah, we are very, in fact, we're in conversation with Visit Bastrop, and I'll be attending one of their meetings on Thursday. We recognize that some of the central questions that Visit Bastrop is asking right now are some of the questions that we're also thinking about. What is the identity of Bastrop? How do people understand it? How, what are the words that they use? We do not want to replicate, we do not want people to get exhausted with the same questions, so we're very aware of that, and we're, we're making sure that we're in conversation with each other so that we can both harness each other's data and, and move forward with the same efforts.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Anybody else? Councilmember Ennis?
I'm probably going to put you on the spot a little bit, but how would you rate having come into town and having a lot of efforts going on in different areas, the museum, the Opera House, the Art Guild, and some of the other organizations in town? How would you, how would you rate the raw talent that you're finding here?
Strong. Usually the, when you go into a community, particularly with the arts, the wonderful thing that I like about the art, I started my career in landscape architecture, and I actually pivoted towards the arts because it was, in the end, it was, it was much more about people and the dynamics that exist within a city, and the ability to conceive of projects, to come forward with ideas, and to bring them into the world. Now I think Bastrop is at a place where it's getting to the next stage of, of capacity, and that requires shifts, that requires, I think the, that what is there is actually really strong. For a city this size, it is amazing. The amount of raw talent, the ideas, the number of people, the dedication of people to exactly growing this sector, and that's not something that you can create. You can't bring it in on a truck, you can't engineer it, you can't conceive of it elsewhere and bring it in. It has to be, it's the soil from which things grow, and that is very much here, so that says to me what, it's not a matter, not often, but sometimes we'll go into a community and that's not quite there, and then that's a much, much more difficult equation. It's here, I think what we have to figure out is how we take a system that has been mostly volunteer-based into the next level that says, okay, how do we figure out for the city what it is so that the city, and this is the thing that's shifting, cities are no longer in the position of just being the producers of art. We're going to do the community festival, we're going to put out just separate pieces of art. Now it's how does the city leverage its funds? How does it become the convener of regional conversations? How does it take a leadership role? How does it identify those specific city and community needs where art can come in in new, in interesting ways that's going to leverage philanthropic dollars? Because philanthropies don't want to give to arts just for art's sake anymore, they want to see partnerships, they want to see opportunities where it connects to a deep story, and what Bastrop has is a deep sense of history and authenticity that could never ever be created on its own. And that's what, that's what new and older generations are craving. They want those experiences, they want to go into a place and be in a place that says, I am home, even if it's not my home, I understand it, because it has that realness, and that's, that's that magic of art that we want to harness and bring, and help the city make sure that it can leverage every opportunity to have that happen, not just for visitors but for residents as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Jones?
So what I'm hearing you say is that you're finding that the trend, or at least what you're trying to harness, is the city's facilitating?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what, instead of, you know, just pointing at what they want to happen or making it happen, they, they're trying to facilitate a broader?
Yes, I think, and nationally what we see is like, it's, cities are getting more sophisticated in how they interact with the arts. It's not, again, it's not the one-stop shop. It's, it's how do we understand the larger system and where that point of leverage is, that the city is one actor with the philanthropies, with the business, with the artists, with the community members. the community members, but making, but, you know, but recognizing that, well, there does need to be someone that needs to hold that larger picture, but take a specific role. And so how is it that we set up that system so that Bastrop can do that and harness the incredible resources that are here?
Lynn, based on the conversation we had yesterday, why don't you connect the dots on the millennials and the experiential expectations of vacationing, and we go because we can get good pictures? The mayor and I attended a seminar earlier in the year, and we've had this conversation in context of economic development. We've had that conversation in the context of retail, but I think it would be important for you to have the same conversation now in the context of cultural arts.
Yeah. One of the fascinating things in working in the arts is that it very much, and I think, as you said, that you can see this across city-building conversations, whether it's, you know, figuring out how to rebuild downtown or the economy, but there is a huge shift in generational expectations. And the, and the sort of, the way that I portray it is, folks that are in their later 50s, 60s, and 70s, they have a, an idea of, and it's a very civic idea of what the arts and culture is about. It's about these institutions that you create and bringing people to them. Then there are the 40-year-olds, and they're at Costco because they have to buy diapers and lunch and food and all of that. And then there's the 20 and 30-year-olds. And the 20 and 30-year-olds are the millennials, who, and you can talk about them broadly, and there's always differences, but in general, this is a generation that grew up watching Friends. This is about experiencing the world together. It's also a generation that grew up reading Harry Potter, which I think, you know, for myself, and I think, you know, we can share, that I grew up reading Harry, Catcher in the Rye and Holden Caulfield. It was about the individual, it was about the journey. But for younger generations, it's about their journey together and this experience and knowing that right, all around us is magic, and they want to see it. They want to see, and it's art that brings that to us. And so when they go into a place, and I think history does too, and that's why I think preservation is important, because you go into a place and suddenly, and you can feel it, you know, in Bastrop, just like looking at the Butler bricks and the doors and everything that's around you, like, oh, there is, there's a little bit of magic in those doors, and because each one is different, and each one has a story. And that is what is so essential, is being able to recognize that, and I think this is the difficult part, that often in city building, we have to recognize that there actually are two different groups that think totally differently about the same subject. The question is, how do we honor both? How do we recognize the energy and the capacity that each brings? Because in truth, we can't do one without the other. So that becomes the task, is setting that middle ground.
Thank you very much, Ms. Osgood. Anybody else?
Thank you so much. Best of luck.
We're looking forward to seeing your finished product. Would you please give the clicker back to?
Thank you.
Clicker, where's the clicker? Right, it's just like at home.
Okay, we're moving on to item 4F, and this is a proclamation, and I am going to read it. Whereas National Preparedness Month is a nationwide effort held each September, whereas the goal of National Preparedness Month is to increase public awareness about the importance of preparing for emergencies and to encourage individuals to take action. And whereas the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, through its Ready Campaign and Citizen Core Program, works with a wide variety of organizations, including local, state, and federal government agencies and the private sector, to highlight the importance of emergency preparedness and to promote individual involvement through events and activities across the nation. And whereas all Americans need to take some simple steps to prepare for emergencies, including getting an emergency supply kit, making a family emergency plan, being informed about different threats, and getting involved in preparing their communities. And whereas the natural man-made and technological emergencies and disasters witnessed nationwide in 2018 illustrate the potential devastation to communities and highlights the importance of pre-planning disaster response and sheltering operations, now therefore I, Mayor Connie B. Schrader, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2018 as National Preparedness Month. Chief Altgelt will come forward to receive this.
Round of applause.
We don't like to talk about disasters very much in Bastrop because we don't like to talk about them, but they visit us more often than we want to, and Chief Altgelt and his entire team, particularly with the addition of City Manager Humble, we've made some great strides in our preparedness, and it's one of those things that you always want to plan for, that you hope you don't need, but when you do need it, it's not a good time to go, what was that plan again? So I really appreciate the effort that he has put into all of that, Chief Altgelt and the whole team. We are now on item 4G, and we are going to get a presentation from the Bastrop Opera House, and we are also going to get a presentation from the Bastrop County Museum and Visitor Center, and I will let those in the audience know that immediately after those presentations, we're going to do the consent agenda, and then we're going to take a break. So you can plan accordingly. Ms. O'Brien?
Good. Mayor, Council, I think we forgot to flip a coin earlier to see who was going to go first in tonight's presentations, but both the museum and visitor center in Bastrop County and the Opera House are going to provide you an overview of all of the great successes and activities that they had in fiscal year 18, and then just a brief recap on their request for funding for fiscal year 19. So without further ado, let's get Ms. Kay up first, because I can see her, and then we'll bring Lisa up after that. Thank you.
Oh, Opera House is, okay. I should always listen to Colin. Lisa, do you want to come first? Your presentation is first in the slide deck, so that.
Should have been later.
You had one job, Sarah. One job. Just saying.
First of all, thank you very much, City Manager, Mayor, and Councilmembers, for your support of the Bastrop Opera House this last year. We are celebrating 130 years of history going into this next season. And there she is. So, like I said, 130 years, so there's a lot of history in this building. We have a very simple mission and very simple objectives, and our mission is to produce quality theatrical productions that entertain, inform, and stimulate our audiences, and I think we do that, we certainly did that this last season. And the objectives, if you look down at the last one, is to maintain a strong arts business cultivating tourism. We do that too, and over 50% of our patrons are from outside of Bastrop County. I think that's showing that we really do bring in the tourism. These are some numbers comparing last season and, the season before last, and the season that we are just currently finishing up as of this last weekend. Our 2016-17 season, our online sales, this is individual tickets, was 1,138, our door sales were 466. For 2017 and 18, our online sales were 2,009.5, and our door sales were 1,175. So we sold 2,546 more tickets this last season than we did the season before.
Ms. Holcomb, how many programs did you do in the 16-17 season?
We printed, I believe, about 28,000 tickets.
Okay, I asked the wrong thing, because program means different thing to you than it does shows. How many shows?
Oh, okay. Seventeen, are you talking about this? Seventeen shows?
No, go back one. When you sold 1,604 tickets, how many shows was that to you? How many was in your season that year?
I see what you're saying. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. We have usually seven shows per performance. Is that what you're asking?
So how many performances were there?
Seven, 17 shows.
She is asking, no. So y'all did amazing in 2018. So in 2017, you didn't produce that number of shows.
No, oh, no.
So how many shows, productions, whatever you want to call it, were there to get 1,604 tickets?
There were about, I think, four, maybe five shows that season. I'm sorry, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, because I'm, it's great that there's additional tickets, but I was trying to draw the correlation that you went from five shows in one season to 17 shows the following season.
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
And that's what this slide is, the 17 shows. We had nine season productions and eight touring shows. So there was something going on almost every weekend. And those shows included our seasonal shows that we produce and direct ourselves, as well as musicals, plays, and bands and concerts that we brought in. The Bastrop Opera House is very reliant on volunteers, and you can see some of the numbers up there, our box office, when we have shows almost every weekend, and have to have several people in our box office, as well as our production crew, our administrative, and that's a lot of volunteer hours, and that doesn't even include maintenance and upkeep in our building committee on a 130-year-old building. So it's a lot of volunteer hours. And I would be very remiss if I did not mention our Youth Performing Arts Academy. This is a source of income for us, as well as a source of pride. Last season, we had about 60 children enrolled in our academy, ages three through high school. So we have several classes, and we've added two more classes on this coming season. We're really only limited to space. We'd have more if we had more space. But they also, the 17 shows that I mentioned did not actually include their two shows. They do a fall show and a spring show as well, and they are fantastic. This was also our first season to ever have a two-week-long summer musical camp, and you can see the kids and the teachers down here on the bottom. This camp went on from 8:30 in the morning to 4:30 in the afternoon, and at the end of two weeks, they put on a full two-act musical that was better than any of the adults could have done. The Opera House also hosted several different events throughout the season for the community. I'm not going to read them all, but you can see there that they hosted quite a few things during the, during the year. We also did several rentals. You can see there, I've listed many of the different rentals that we did, some on the weekends, and some during the day, and some during the weekday when we aren't doing rehearsals. We will be doing 16 shows this upcoming season, with the possibility of one or two more that we're still trying to work in, and you can just see some of them up there. So we also, again, have a fantastic season coming up that we're already marketing and really looking forward to. Supporting tourism, as I mentioned, over 50% of our ticket sales are from outside of Bastrop County. We are working diligently into bringing in touring groups. I currently have a group that will be coming in to see one of our upcoming season shows that's coming in from, on a tour bus and bringing about 68 people. So I've arranged for them to have dinner first at a local restaurant, and then the bus will be bringing them over to us. So I'm trying to use that as an example of what we can do and how well it works. We work heavily with local businesses, and we are currently working on bringing the Texas Nonprofit Youth Festival to Bastrop for the years 2020 and 2021. They were here several years ago, they're wanting to come back, and that brings in several hundred people for four days to a week, staying in the hotels. Thank you. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Of the 16 shows that you're having, how many of those are touring?
Eight touring.
Okay.
Lisa, somebody, my husband and I have, I believe, attended all but three of the performances you've done this year, and it's been outstanding.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the quality and the variety. If you're not attending your programs, you're missing out. We really have enjoyed it.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Council, any questions for Ms. Holcomb?
No.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you. Now you're at Ms. Sapikus. All right. And I think Ms. Holcomb left the clicker for you, so there you go.
All right. Oh, I'm so tall. Can you hear me? Great. Hey, there it is. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Schrader, council members. Ms. Humble, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm just going to start with a brief introduction. 66 years ago, in 1952, the Bastrop County Historical Society was founded to provide a way of collecting and preserving the materials, artifacts, and documents relating to the history of Stephen F. Austin's Little Colony, now known as Bastrop. Today, through the generous support of the community and you all, the society takes pride in overseeing a remarkable history museum and visitor center. We are proud to present our accomplishments for 2018 and goals for 2019, and we will begin with the visitor center, and I'm really excited to be here. So between October 1st of last year and June 30th, we greeted 7,360 visitors, 5,659 were from the state of Texas, a little over 1,700 were from outside the state, and 1,653 spent the night. Looking at the totals compared to last year, the quarterly comparisons show that the numbers are going up. So I just want to make a comment about this slide, because if you look at October, December, I had to compare that to 2016, because we obviously haven't gotten there yet. So that's 2017 of last year, and then the one before. And then these two compares last year to this year, 2018, and you do see some numbers are going up. Other highlights for the visitor center include full participation in First Fridays. We did a swimsuit special exhibit and Tijuana Texas Rangers, in addition to other ones too. We also have an up-to-date, comprehensive, and prominent display of maps and brochures for visitors, in addition, an interactive display with all current and upcoming events in Bastrop County. We provided some significant community support, hosting receptions. The middle picture is the Main Street Revolution, the upper left is the Texas Historical Foundation, where 55 people came and spent the night, most of them at the Hyatt, well, they actually spent the weekend. We remained open for some special events, including a table on Main, and provided benefits to some event-goers, like half-price during Veterans Day car show. And the bottom one, you can't really see, on the left, is the Music Festival. We hosted a group and a wine tasting, which was lots of fun. Lisa mentioned volunteers, and I have to mention them as well, because we couldn't do what we do without them, and since October, we've recorded a little over 1,000 hours just at the visitor center, and I do have to point out, Maureen, could you just raise your hand? She's here with me today. She's one of our hottest visitor center volunteers, and we do appreciate you. Thank you very much. And then, of course, the dollar value using the standard hourly rate. So moving on to the museums, some of the highlights include three special exhibits, and we are working on a fourth one to change out in September. They included the Bastrop Ladies' Reading Circle, which actually founded the Historical Society. Bastrop County Education, and the current one is World War II on the home front, which focuses just on here in Bastrop County. We did, we added two additional permanent exhibits, Governor Joseph D. Sayers, and Cowboys, Cows, and Cattlemen. If you haven't seen them, you need to come by. We hosted four quarterly speaker meetings, Dr. Gene Prius, John Chandler did a historic site photographic tour, Dr. Frank de La Teja, and Dela Sayers, who's a descendant of Governor Joseph D. Sayers. Last December, we had a home store. Those are the homes that were on the tour. We had over 400 people attend, and I think everyone had a great time. This year, we will have six homes and a church, so it should be fun. A research library, this is a place that is happening. You think libraries are quiet, not at VCHS and the museum and visitor center. In fact, our archivist is here, Carol Kaiser. She provided these numbers for me. We now have 13,000 items. We just increased that by 768 paces this year, well, this last nine months, all still need to be archived. So far this year, nearly 100 individuals have reached out to the library. In addition, we do provide assistance with the Main Street Downtown Program to provide research for the homes that are on that. Additional highlights, staff and volunteers participated in trick-or-treat last year. We did formalize our oral history program. We were provided with some dollars from the city to do that, and we have recorded about a dozen so far, and we will continue to do that next year. I do want to create a blog where people can click on a person's face and hear whatever stories that they did share with us. We did walking tours in May for Preservation Month. We do plan to do those again in October, hoping to confirm one more person on that. And we do do ongoing step-on-bus tours and docent-led museum tours. I'm also testing an interactive map of the downtown area, since things change so quickly. I thought maybe if we had it online, that visitors could look at more recent, when a business goes out, we could take it off right away, so they could just go in and say, oh, that's not there, it's now this or that. So I'm still working on that. And the volunteer hours for the museum are... And the volunteer hours for the museum are just a little over 800. And I just want to mention that we don't record, I want to try to do this, but we don't have record on the Board of Trustees, which is huge for us. Our board is just phenomenal. And our museum curator, all are done at a volunteer level. So those are not included in these numbers. So 2019, yay! We will continue to build new and nurture existing partnerships. Lisa and I just met, actually, before we did these presentations, and we're going to try to partner next year and do something fun, but I don't want to give it away just yet. We're going to increase awareness of our service through activities that allow people to experience Bastrop history. We're talking about doing some things like lunchtime things and that sort of, we have a program committee now, and we're going to start ramping up on that. Complete an additional permanent exhibit. Creatively participate in First Fridays. Be accessible to visitors and residents during various city activities. Continue to catalog and preserve the archived items, because if we can't get to them, they're really not much good. Increase broader range of input on special exhibits. We do want to try to reach out and maybe do more loaning of items and have more of a rotating way to exhibit those. And then more locals might want to come in on a regular basis, which would be nice. Continue to collect, transcribe, and make available oral histories. And I do want to develop a junior historian program. So I don't want to screw this up, but I just want to say thank you, and I do appreciate your continuing support for us. We just, I love this, so thank you very much.
Ms. Sapikus, you do an outstanding job.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead. This is your chance, Ms. Councilman. No?
I want to brag on Maureen and Carol. Maureen, when you walk in, you feel, you know your home in Bastrop, because Maureen's shining smiley face is there. And I also want to mention that Carol, for a personal story for me, one of the honors that I have is I get to speak at the Memorial Day Presentations every year. And you can only quote so many presidents so many times. It's kind of hard to come up with good information. So I thought, I'm going to go by and see Carol. And she gave me fabulous information immediately, and I was able to speak on Memorial Day about a resident of Bastrop, and it was just a really neat family story. And so Kay's point of if you can't get to the things that you have, they really aren't doing you any good, she really brought that home to me. I just want to personally thank her for the effort that she did for that. I really, really appreciate that. Councilmember Ennis, did you have any comments about the museum?
I used to sit on the board, and am a former president, and I told Ms. Sapikus I was going to really grill her on questions. So she was saying, I'm leaving now. This is your chance.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Councilmember Ennis?
I want to thank the museum and the Opera House. Y'all are just knocking it out of the park. It's so exciting, because I've been in Bastrop an awful long time, and there's been people that have gone before you, and they've really, you know, put stuff together for you, but you have just knocked it out of the park. Thank you so much. Appreciate you both.
Thank you, guys. We really appreciate your time and appreciate the presentation. It answers a lot of questions and helps us, helps council know that they're spending those hot funds wisely. So we appreciate that. Okay, as promised, we're going to do the consent agenda, and then we are going to take a break. Since we are going to do the consent agenda, this is when I ask counsel if anybody on council wants to pull anything off of the consent agenda. It is items 8A through 8F. Counsel has nothing to pull. Is there anyone in the audience that wants an item pulled? With that, Madam Secretary, if you will read the consent agenda?
The consent agenda reads as follows. 8A, consider action to approve city council ordinance from the August 14, 2018, regular meeting, August 20, 2018, and August 21st, 2018, council workshops. Item 8B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2018-14 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the budget for the fiscal year 2018 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, repelling all ordinances and actions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2018-12 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, resoning 0.398 acres of Bastrop Town tract abstract, 11, and 2.046 acres of Building Block 12, east of Water Street, from C2, Commercial 2, to CMU, commercial mixed-use character zone, and extend the downtown Bastrop Form-Based Code regulating plan area located within northeast block of SH-95 and Chestnut Street, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, including a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8D, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2018-15 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, granting a conditional use permit for religious institution used for Bastrop Bible Church on 0.145 acres of Building Block 5, east of Water Street, located at 606 Pecan Street, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, setting out conditions including a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8E, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2018-16 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, resoning 0.70 acres of Lot 67, within the Bastrop Town tract abstract 11, from Form-Based Code character zone CMU, commercial mixed-use, to MF1 multifamily 1, located at 1706 Farm Street, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, including a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8F, consider action to approve resolution R-2018-69 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the Pecan Park Section 1A, final plot being 13.994 acres out of the Mosay-Rosee survey, abstract 56, located east of the future extension of Sterling Drive, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, repelling all conflicting resolution and providing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Counsel, I'm happy you entertained a motion.
I move to approve. Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis. I have a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Items 8A through 8F are approved. As promised, we are going to take a five-minute break, and when we return, we are going to start with item 6B, receive monthly report from Visit Bastrop. We'll be back in five minutes. It is 7:28, and we're in recess. Okay, it's 7:35. I'm going to call us back to order, because we have a long agenda tonight. So we are on item 6B, receive monthly report from the Visit Bastrop. And I think Mr. Howard's going to be presenting tonight, the president of the board.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. Appreciate being here. I have a few things to go over with y'all tonight. So in the interest of time, I would like to forego going through our normal presentation. Y'all have all got copies of it. If you have any questions, Dale's here, so we could answer those. The only thing we would like to point out in our report is the STAR report on the first page has been modified. We've been working diligently to include the Hyatt's room numbers in the Bastrop line item. That's your top-line item there. Up until this report, the Hyatt hasn't been included in that. So now the Hyatt is included in that. So this now gives us a much more comprehensive view of how we are doing in the industry, because we haven't been able to include the Hyatt's numbers. So moving forward from here, that should help clarify things. Other than that, I would like to report that the, we'd like to thank Dale Lockett. As y'all know, he's going to be retiring at the end of September. He's done a tremendous job to get us to where we're at now and kind of set us up to be successful moving forward. I'm proud to announce that we've been working with Searchwide. We diligently have been trying to find a new director. We got six candidates, you know, from 20 down to six, brought them all in, interviewed them one-on-one, narrowed it down to two, and we are proud to announce that we have hired Susan Smith, who's going to be starting on the 24th. Her press release is going to go out in the morning. She stood out, hands above everybody else, as capable of running our organization and a perfect fit to plug into our community. So we're very excited about that. She has history running the entire state of Vermont's DMO, so she has an extensive history running DMOs. And so hopefully, we're looking forward to her presenting to y'all once she starts with us at the end of the month. Moving on from-
So the real question, is Bastrop County bigger than the state of Vermont?
No.
Okay, okay.
No, we did that. We did that. No, it's not. But I don't know that it's bigger than Austin. Might be a little smaller than Austin. So we've done that, and then the marketing committee has been, obviously, you know, to give everybody kind of a little history, you know, we've started from scratch. We've had nine months to get our feet on the ground. We had to get a marketing strategy together. We had to get a brand system going, and we had to engage with a company to do that. So we put out an RFP. We got 30 responses. The marketing committee narrowed that down, and we ended up choosing Augustine. Augustine has been working with us now for a few months to develop that brand strategy. We just had a presentation earlier today. We're very excited with how this is moving forward, and so we're really looking forward to presenting to you in September what we've come up with. So all of that is moving forward. And following that up, the board is, you know, to let the public understand how Visit Bastrop is structured, you know, the board is made up of representatives from different industries within the community. So for instance, I represent the arts. I own Deep and the Hard Art Foundry. I've been part of the community for almost 20 years. I've served on many boards. So as chair, I also represent the arts. Other members of our boards represent other industries. Part of our mandate is to make sure that those different industries have a voice, getting ourselves established, getting our feet on the ground, getting to the point where now we are moving forward. We've established that those industries are going to meet biannually. So each one of the board members is then having focus group meetings within their sectors. So we've successfully had the meetings with retail, and we've successfully had the meetings with restaurants, and we've successfully had the meetings with nightlife. And then I'm going to be hosting the art meeting on Thursday morning at 8:30 over here at the Art Center. Those are opportunities for those different groups to speak and have a voice and tell us what they'd like to see happen, and obviously for us to tell them how things are moving forward. The other industry representatives are still scheduling their meetings, and those are coming up. And then all of our at-large members are welcome to attend any or all of those, and they're definitely participating. I would like to tell you that the ones we've had so far, we've had good turnout. We've had, you know, a lot of input, positive, a little bit of negative, but we've been able to communicate and try to figure out how we can fix things moving forward and communicate with everybody. We're also learning as we go. So we realized after the first retail meeting that we needed to have a sign-in sheet, and we needed to take minutes. So now we've got staff attending the meetings, we're recording the meetings, and we're going to, you know, turn that into some, you know, condensed minutes that we can turn into y'all twice a year to show y'all, you know, the meetings we're having, who attended, and what topics came up. So that said, that's where we're at. That's where we're headed. I'd be happy to answer any questions y'all may have, but I just wanted to give y'all a quick update.
So Counsel, I'd like us to have a round of applause for Mr. Lockett and everything he's done for. And Clint, volunteering, boy, it's, my heart goes out to you. I really appreciate the energy and effort and hours that you've put into it, you and your entire board. If you would share my thanks with them, I would very much appreciate it.
I will. Thank you very much.
Counsel, Councilmember Ennis?
Great report.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments from counsel? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm driving the city secretary crazy. Are you Mr. Jordan Bayney? Okay, we are moving to item 9G for individual consideration. We're going to hold a public hearing and consider action to approve resolution number R-2018-64 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, granting a variance to the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Article 4.02.005, sale of alcoholic beverages, separation requirements from church, public, or private school, or public hospital, on property located at 1006 Main Street, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, establishing an effective date. Ms. Land? We'll have a presentation from staff, and then I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening.
Surprise, Allison.
Yes.
Okay, I think you're looking for 9G, right?
9G, okay.
There you go.
There we go. All right. So the location requesting this variance is 1,006 Main Street. Not too long ago, we came for a variance in the previous business in this location, Main Street Cafe. We now have a new business going into this location, which requires a new variance. As we're aware, the Calvary Episcopal School is not very far from this site. It's right across the alley. It's less than 300 feet away. And a 300-foot separation is required between a private school, as defined by the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission, and a location selling alcohol. All right, to sell alcohol in the city of Bastrop, it must be allowed by the zoning district. It must be in a permitted location for the sale of alcoholic beverages section in our code, and it must meet the separation requirements. There's the 300 feet I described just a moment ago. And so to approve these variances, you want to think about would enforcement of that 300-foot separation create an instance that is not in the best interest of the public, constitutes a waste or inefficient use of land or other resources, creates an undue hardship on an applicant for a license or permit, does not serve its intended purpose, is not effective or necessary, or for any other reason, that City Council, after consideration of health, safety, welfare, the public, and the equities of the situations, determines is in the best interest of the community. All right, so this location is downtown. I mean, it's three stores off of the intersection of Chestnut and Main Street. Zoning is allowed. It meets the permitted location requirements. The land use is allowed in this zoning district. Previous business was the same land use restaurant, and held a variance approved by council. Recent variances in the area include Bastrop Beer Company, Main Street Cafe at this particular location, as well as Neighbor's Kitchen and Yard. And as of the time of this presentation, we had not received any public comments. Any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Land before I open the public hearing? I'm officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay, I'm officially closing the public hearing. Counsel, I know the applicant is in the room. If you have any questions for them, or any further, with a motion and a second, we can have a discussion.
Move to approve resolution number R-2018-64. I'll second.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson. I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Resolution number R-2018-64 is approved, and welcome to the community. We're glad to have you. Okay. Thank you. We're now moving to 9J. It's good to run the meetings, because I get to pick what we're going to talk about. Okay, just making sure that I didn't know if there was a cart we needed to put in front of this horse, but here we go. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2018-70 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving three task orders for the design of wastewater treatment plant number three and related collection system improvements for $5,964,329. Public relations related to the design and construction of the wastewater treatment plant number three for $85,000. And the third and final order for general engineering services, not to exceed $10,000 to KSA engineers in the- $10,000 to KSA engineers in the amount of $6,59,329, and no sense. Attached as exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor, and council. I just want to remind you, on your resolution, we've actually made some changes, just to point out that it was the design and the construction management. So, you weren't getting a plant for $5 million, but you're getting the design and the construction management of a plant for $5 million.
I tried, council. I really did try to get the plant and the design, but they weren't going for it.
So, I just want to clear that up before we got started. But we actually have a couple of folks from KSA here tonight, so they can talk about that. I'm just going to let them have the floor and go from there.
Mayor and council, as KSA comes to the mic, I think this is a pretty exciting evening. This is a culmination of a tremendous amount of work. This community has been taking a journey relative to a new wastewater treatment plant for almost a decade. We started the journey shortly after I got here, and y'all personally have committed a lot of staff volunteer time to hear the policy aspects of this. We interviewed 49, well, we reviewed 49 submittals and interviewed probably 14 firms. KSA absolutely rose to the top when it came to wastewater treatment, and I think when you get through hearing KSA's presentation, it won't be lost on you why they were selected. So, there you go, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, council, city manager, and staff. We appreciate you inviting us to be here tonight to give you a brief introduction to who we are, as well as the project. My name is John C. Young. I'm the Director of Municipal Services for KSA and also the principal in charge of the project. KSA was formed about 40 years ago, back during the days when the EPA was in its infancy, and the Clean Water Act of 1972, the amendments of 1972 were approved. And these were the first real regulatory efforts toward controlling the quality of the receiving streams, our rivers, lakes, and estuaries. And during that time, about five wastewater engineers from around the state got together and formed KSA to work in that environment to help cities with wastewater treatment. Since that time, we've done hundreds of wastewater plants and wastewater collection system improvements, similar to what we're going to do here for the city of Bastrop. We've since diversified our business. We now have about 150 employees, and we've diversified into aviation, recreation, transportation, some other things. But our core business has always been wastewater, and it's the one that's nearest and dearest to me, because that happens to be what I do. We now have about 150 employees and eight offices throughout the state of Texas and a few other offices in other states as well. From the time that we were invited to interview, the city manager made it clear, as well as staff, that the successful completion of the wastewater plant is critical to the agenda of the city council. And that was not lost on us. We fully understand the importance of this project, and you have my promise and commitment that we will assign our senior wastewater engineers to this project. We've created a plan that I think is very good for the city. It will accomplish your goals, and we are anxious to get started on that. Tonight, I have two other speakers, and we won't take but five or six more minutes, but I have two other speakers. Our project manager, Bob Lane, I want to introduce him. Hunter Hillburn, our public relations manager, wants to speak for a couple of minutes. And then, we have Robin Kersey here with us as well, who several of y'all know. So, Bob.
Mayor, council, seeing Mayor Humble, thank you for having me today. I feel very blessed to be here. I'm a plant specialist. In my background, I've designed and stamped more than 20 rat and wastewater treatment plants in my career. If you take that a little bit further, beyond stamp work, my whole body of plant work includes more than 50 plants. It's something that I'm passionate about, and I take a great pride in my work. When the city approached us and we sat down and talked to them about their goals and priorities, the city staff made it clear to us that they wanted to make sure that the work was produced quickly. I think "fast" is a better word. Another goal was to have a plant that is expandable. Another goal is for the plant to have a treatability component that will allow it to grow and take on more stringent ethyl requirements in the future through permitting regulatory oversight. And KSA is very well positioned to address all of the city's goals. We are confident in our solutions and our methodologies. One of the tools that I use in my toolbox is something that I call a process evaluation matrix. And really, a wastewater plant is a system of systems. And so, what the process evaluation matrix allows me to do, and others, others can participate in this as well. It could be a team effort. It can include city staff as well. But the process evaluation matrix allows us to assess a system or component and its ability to expand, its scalability features, its cost, its capital cost, its operations and maintenance cost, and its ability to handle a treatability limits both now and in the future. And so, we use this tool, I use this tool regularly in my day-to-day job duties, and it's a tool that I would like to use in your community as well. I believe it's a powerful tool. It's very clear and concise. It helps troubleshoot some stubborn components that can be related to very sophisticated We're very proud to be here. Again, I feel very blessed to be in front of you today. You have a beautiful community. I think the projects that we've outlined in the scope of work will allow your community to grow. One of my major challenges here in front of you today is to let you know that strategically, my goal is to stay ahead of the development. I don't want to get behind, and our goal is to produce work for you quickly. We've just recently produced about four plants in the last 12 months, and right now, our production assembly line is warm. It's not cold, and it's not hot. It's nice and warm. So, we're ready for your work right now, if you'll give me that blessing. Thank you for your time, and I'm going to pass the mic to Hunter Hillburn.
Mayor and council, one of the things that Bob's process allows for is the inclusion of our staff. So, not only is Trey and Jerry going to be involved, but Curtis and the operators that are actually going to manage the plant. So, they're not going to wake up at the conclusion when the quote-unquote keys are handed to the city and then get to figure out what to do about it. We're already taking tours of plants that they've built, so that we have some perspective of what different looks like, and they'll have a seat at the table, so that when we get to the end, they will know what to do with that. They've pledged to make sure that everybody is trained appropriately, and I think that's as exciting for our team that has worked magic with what they have, to be a part of something that's very exciting and very new. And we're delighted you're without your scooter, sir.
Me, too. I still have a boot, but no scooter. Thank you. Great job, Bob, with the analogy, warm and cold. That was really good. I know that was a stretch for you. So, my name is Hunter...
Oh, that's hurtful.
My name is Hunter Hillburn. I am going to be in charge of the public relations component of this project. I'm so grateful to be here tonight to meet you face-to-face and to talk to you. We're going to get to know each other very well over the next few years as we execute this project. And I want to, and so, I'm very glad to be here and to be able to do that. Let me tell you just a little bit about my staff. I, internally, on staff, I have a graphic designer that works for me full-time, a content generator in myself, and I have three layout specialists. And all of these team members are going to be dedicated to making sure that this project goes smoothly, and we have access to them and their talents to be able to put out information and communication in an effective manner. The reason I'm letting you know that is because we're not going to rely on some firm somewhere that we're going to have to get in line with to wait for materials to be produced. We're going to be able to produce those in-house at KSA. And so, that's a very important piece of the puzzle here. One of the things that Ms. Land has made very clear to us is that we are not going to execute this project in the dark, that this is going to be a transparent project, that we're going to communicate effectively with the community, with the people of Bastrop. And we want to do that. We want to be sure, because we think we're going to do a good job, we want the people of Bastrop to know that we're doing a good job and that we're executing this project wisely. And so, we're committed to that. And so, if we start to communicate, we're going to communicate and communicate more. And one of the things that we're not going to do is rely on social media for our communication efforts. We're going to look for digital and analog methods of communicating with people. If we're going to, if we have a hard time getting people to come to a public meeting at 10 o'clock on a Tuesday morning, then we're going to host that same public meeting at an off-business hour time, so that we can allow those people to come to the meetings. If we have people who are not connected to the internet but need this information, we're going to make an effort to get to them through door hangers, or through postcards, or through water bill statements, whatever means that we need to do to get to those people and make sure that that information is being given to them, we're going to do that. One of the first things that we will do with this project is create a strategy, and this strategy will outline how many public meetings we're going to have, what modes of communication we're going to have, and all of those things. And that will be agreed upon between the city and us as we go through this project. And the last thing that I want to say is just that, you know, as we execute this project, we're going to be committed to that effective communication, and we want to do a good job for you. And we're planning to do a good job, and we want to be sure that people know about that. So, with that, I think we have a few minutes for some questions, if we have those.
Council won't be surprised I have a question. Go ahead, Councilmember Rogers. Your light's on, I thought you might. On the monitoring and the scope of services, the last, I think it's probably a Bob question, but the very last thing was monitoring the system for 24 months, because you'd make advice on how to do it better. And I just wanted to get a feel for monitoring it. Does that mean you're coming out once a month, once a week? How do you see that service being provided?
Well, thank you, Mayor. That's an excellent question. I think the short answer is that we will come out as often as necessary. That's really, I think that's really what's important. You know, and especially when a plant just starts up, there's going to be some, I don't mean this negatively, but there's going to be, you know, there's going to be some bugs and there's going to be some troubleshooting. And so, we're going to have to overcome those. And so, it wouldn't be uncommon for myself to be here every day. But I don't think, clearly, the budget doesn't sustain that kind of level of effort, and we wouldn't expect that to continue on. So, what will happen is, what will actually happen is, we'll be here frequently after it started up, and then as time goes on, as you get closer and closer out, six months, 12 months, year and a half, then the hours and the time are going to skinny up. And so, that's really what's going to happen, Mayor. You really wouldn't need us coming out here every day a year and a half from now.
If we need you every day, two years after it's built, we're having other problems. People are probably already being in conversation. But what I wanted to clarify is that if staff, you know, if there's been a turnover, because things happen, particularly, it's a complicated plant. I really like the description of a system within a system. There's many, many moving parts and pieces. And what I don't want to face is 18 months after the plant's been turned over and we're needing it, it's like, oh, well, they said they're only coming out once a month. So, that's why I was asking the question.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And we will be out here at your discretion, as you wish, as often as you want.
We have been abundantly clear that KSA will own this plant from tonight when you approve this, through two years of maintenance, when the contractor comes back to fix the checklist. And we'll make one call, and it's to that man right there. There will be no finger pointing, and they are not confused by that.
And I appreciate that, city manager, but it's the first time we've gotten to see him, and I'm wanting that conversation to...
Yes, ma'am, and I want it on the record, so if he's confused, I can show him on video that I said in front of my bosses that we're going to call late, and he's going to do it, so he's not confused.
Well, let's take this one step further, and I'm just going to go ahead and give you my cell phone number, and you can have it 24 hours a day.
There you go. I appreciate that. Councilmember Jones, did you have a question? Thank you very much.
I do. So, when do you plan on being finished?
So, there's two different schedule iterations in the base contract, and that's for flexibility. One methodology takes an amendment, and it follows the amendment all the way through its cycle, which is a year. And what we'll do is, we'll, in that schedule, we'll actually begin the detailed design about three months before that permit is completed. Now, the reason for that is important, and because the engineer's taking on some risk right there. What he's going to do is, he's going to start design without knowing what the limits are. And so, in our situation, KSA is going to take on some risk for the benefit of the community and for the benefit of your taxpayers. And so, what will happen is, is that will, what happens if you back up all the design work, that pushes us into that permitting cycle by three months. And what the whole schedule allows us to do is meet the RFP requirements for having a plant built in 2021. Okay? Now, that's actually just schedule iteration number one. There's a second iteration. It's less time-intensive, because it assumes a permit renewal, which is not a rigorous 12-month cycle. It's only a six-month cycle. So, we're not pushed by time there from a permitting perspective. And so, if we get through the project using a permit renewal, then the project will be faster, we'll get to the finish line faster, and I think that we were scheduling something around an August or September completion timeframe in 2021.
So, aren't we, talk to me about the permit a little bit, how that's going to work? Because I thought what we were going to do...
Anyway, Bob, what you have communicated to staff, council's not been briefed on, so why don't you talk about why we're not letting go of our permit, why we're going to keep it, and how you're managing that, so you can make sure we have redundancy and our toilets flush? Why don't you tell council that?
Yes, ma'am. So, the original, there's an existing permit for the plant number three. And the existing permit has a predefined level of treatment, and it has a predefined set of unit processes. And that is what I was calling earlier, a system of systems. All of this is outlined, and it was designed by other engineers. And it also has a flow rate attached to that, to that body of work, that document. It's rather thick. And so, to modify that document, that triggers what's called formally a permit amendment. And so, that has got a set one-year time period. But it's not an obstacle for us, because we figured out a way to overcome that by accelerating our design schedule back into the permit cycle, so that we can meet the objectives of the city staff. The other permit, the permit amendment is a mechanism that allows us to modify a very small section of calculations or unit processes inside that permit. So, it's what's called a minor change. And so, if we can get through the design process with a permit renewal, then that can benefit us by giving us more speed. And if it turns out that the permit renewal, a full amendment is needed, then we create our own speed... our own speed by performing two tasks at the same time. Did that help, or?
Yeah, so to be clear, I think what we're doing is, is we're going to be using the permit that we have, right? And we're, but we're going, you're going to be designing to the new standards.
That is correct.
So I just want to make sure that that's what we're talking about with all these amendments, because that's what we had talked about.
So essentially, Councilmember Jones is remembering the six hours we spent together back in March, correct?
That's right. It was a summation. You could have just told us that.
We went into this thinking that we would have to start over with a new permit. KSA came in and identified our current situation, and recognized that that was not an option. So they have met with TCEQ and believe that they can take our current permit and modify it to meet your expectations of more stringent standards when the effluent hits the river. And they plan to mobilize and be on-site before our permit expires. They're going to build the first 2 million of the 4 million gallon plant. That will be online by 2021. What that is going to do, then, is give us options. So if our current plant has been exhausted at that point in time, and we have to turn it off, well, guess what? We can still flush the toilets. If it's got some life in it, then we'll leave it running, and we'll have some redundancy until the second 2 million gets plant, gets built, and then we'll turn wastewater plant number one and number two off. So they have done an extremely powerful job, I think, of solving our needs of redundancy immediately, and giving us options until we can get this right over the life of the asset, which was the other thing that y'all have been adamant about, is that we build it right, so that we get flexibility and usefulness over the lifecycle. And they came in and pitched this and made a tremendous argument that's hard to overcome. So I think that they have done the best we can with all of the issues we have to deliver consistent quality service and grow and meet our demand without compromising the service to our citizens. And that's all I think you could ask for.
So basically, I guess I could sum that up by saying that you took our situation, and by using that permit, you're going to do it faster and cheaper.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Nice summary, Councilmember Jones. We appreciate that. Any other questions, counsel? Mayor Protem Nelson?
No questions, just a comment. While we want you to move with speed and purpose, no doubt, we know the ever-changing bureaucracy that exists with TCEQ and other regulatory agencies. Please don't let us be surprised by anything. Keep us up to date on this, so we can make good decisions in moving forward, because this is extraordinarily important to this council and this community.
Yes, sir, I understand very much.
Excellent comment, Mayor Protem. Anybody else? Thank you very much, Mr. Lane. I know we're going to get to spend a lot of time together.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, counsel, I am willing to entertain a motion in a second. We can have a discussion if you want.
A move for approval.
A second. I have a motion for approval of Resolution Number R2018-70 from Councilmember Peterson, and a second from Councilmember Jones. So any further discussion, any questions? You guys, I thought you would ask one question. City Manager, where's the money coming from?
As I mentioned during the budget presentation, we have money in fund balance to pay for the initial expenses. We appreciate that we're going to have to sell revenue bonds for wastewater before the year is out. We have money set aside in our debt fund to pay the first payment of that debt service, which will likely be done in August. But what this allows us to do is to meet the timetable necessary to maintain our permit, which expires in September of 2019. We can do this out of our existing fund balance while we work towards selling revenue bonds to pay for the remainder of the contract.
Thank you, City Manager. Counsel, does that make sense with all the budget discussions we've had lately? All right. If there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll. Councilmember Peterson?
Let's get her done, yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, KSA, and we're looking forward to first-class work from you. And this has been Decades in the Making. Let's have a round of applause. All righty, speaking of how we're going to pay for that, let's move to Item 9F. Consider action to approve ordinance Number 2018-17 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas authorizing the issuance of City of Bastrop, Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2018, levying an ad lorm tax and pledging certain surplus revenues in the support of certificates, approving an official statement, a paying agent, registrar agreement, and other agreements relating to the sales and issuance of certificates, and ordaining other matters relating to the issuance of certificates, repealing all ordinances and actions in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. Counsel, you were handed out something that looked like this. Now, this is the item for you to look at that. City Manager.
Mayor and Counsel, Dan Webb Miller is here. He is our financial advisor. After you authorized the sale of the debt, he's been to the market, confirmed our bond rating, and is bringing back the results of that sale, and is going to fill you in with the details. So, Dan?
Great, thank you, City Manager, Mayor, council members. The booklet before you is just a quick summary of the activities that have taken place to date. I'll just start on Page 1, because I think it's important to understand a historical perspective, when you do have to go borrow money to fund projects, where interest rates are, historically speaking. So the first page that I presented to you has a graph on it, and the most important part of this graph is it's a weekly index produced by the bond buyer of 20 municipal bonds rated AA. And you'll hear in a minute, that is also the bond rating for the City of Bastrop. What's important to note, that line moves up and down quite a bit over this 10-year period, that it shows. The upper right-hand corner gives you some key points to focus on. In that upper right-hand box, the current index is at 3.94%. That was as of August 23rd. The lowest point of that index is July 7, 2016, of 2.8%. And just as a historical perspective, over, this index has been published since 1961, that low point is the low point since 1961. We're extremely low interest rates still in this environment. The average over the 10-year period here is 4.05%. So we're just below the average. And the maximum of this index is October of 2008, 6.01%. The percent of time that were higher than the current rate is 48%. So basically, over the last 10 years, which is really over the last 50 years, we're about right in the middle. Half the time rates are greater than where we're at today. So that's a perspective of where the interest rates are. If you flip to Page 2, as City Manager pointed out, we had a conference call with Standard Empores to go over the bond rating questions and topics. It's important to note that the bond rating is great information and feedback to you, but these comments I'm about to go over with you are what the rating agency is communicating to investors, those that are putting their money out to buy your bonds, to fund projects that the city is taking on. So it's important, because this rating reflects their credit assessment of the City of Bastrop. And so they affirmed, as I said, the AA rating. Their rating report lists the following factors considered in their rating analysis of the City of Bastrop. The strong economy with access to broad and diverse metropolitan statistical area. Strong management with good financial policies and practices. Strong budgetary performance. Very strong budgetary flexibility with an available fund balance in fiscal 2017 of 35% of operating expenditures. And then very strong liquidity. You are in very good position. You also, the policies and practices and the plans that you're not only have in place, but you're continuing to update, put in place, and review was all covered on that call. And again, a double-A rating, as you can see on the right-hand side of this page, is almost as strong as you can get for a city your size. The double-A is fantastic, and as you grow and continue to manage things, you will have upward pressure on that rating to double-A plus. So congratulations to you all to attaining the double-A. And the next page will show you, the market received that information very well as well. The summary of bids received. You received nine bids on your Certificate of Obligation sale this morning at 10:00 a.m. Those bids came in over an Internet-based platform called Parity at 10:00 a.m. They literally, it's like an eBay auction, they just hit their send button literally a few seconds before 10:00 a.m., and then they're calling us within five minutes, really within two to three minutes, because they already have talked and know where each other bid, and finding out who won the bid. But as you can see, the Baker Group out of Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, won their bid. What's interesting here, they bid at 9:38. They submitted early, and they won. You can look down at RW Baird, they submitted at 9:59 and 18 seconds to go. It's interesting to see them come in and where they fall within the spectrum. The other thing to note is between the low bid and the high bid, there's 22.7 basis points. One of the reasons we recommended a competitive sale was to let those that wanted to be aggressive, because what they are doing is they want the bonds to go out and sell. Baker Group places a lot of bonds with banks throughout Texas. So I think these are likely winding up, because they're bank-qualified, and some banks somewhere throughout the state, possibly within the city itself. So congratulations on receiving nine bids and the low bid of the Baker Group. Finally, the last page, I just wanted to point out, we worked with Tracy and City Manager to identify some of these projects that wanted to fund it over five years, and some projects could go out to 20 years, and principles amortize each and every year. So here, you see that 1,280,000, or actually 1,323,500 worth of projects were financed over a five-year period. The balance of 3,376 was funded over a 20-year portion. But we combined it into one issuance to have cost-effective and economies of scale, and not create multiple issues.
Mayor and counsel, as I explained during budget, the $1.1 million that we have allocated for street maintenance year one and two is part of the five-year portion, and as a part of the North Bastrop rehabilitation programs that include water, wastewater, streets, and drainage. The drainage portion, I'm sorry, the street portion of that project is included in this. So we've tried to be very good stewards to ensure that the money is amortized over the useful life of its assets. Dan encouraged us to do that through an amortization schedule and not separate sales, so that we could save money on the cost of sales. So I think he's done a great job of meeting your expectations, making sure that we're financially good stewards of our money, and at the end of the day, meeting your needs for financing our capital without increasing your taxes.
So with that, that's the presentation on the bids received. Bart Fowler with McCall Parkhurst is here to discuss any questions or comments regarding the ordinance. Again, the bids were received this morning, so the ordinance had to be in the package prior to. So all the information received on the bid has now been put into the ordinance and completed in line with the bid.
And that's one of the ones you passed by, too?
I don't think the new ordinance has been filled out for you as far as distribution. Our bond counsel has it, and at the conclusion of the meeting, the mayor, the city attorney, I think, have to sign off on things, and the city secretary. So once it's approved, based on this pamphlet that Dan has gone over, then the mayor will be authorized to execute the completed ordinance that he asked.
That's correct. For the record, my name is Bart Fowler with McCall Parkhurst. It's my pleasure to serve the city's bond counsel. Everything the City Manager has said is correct. The one exception is we have a little bit of time. You don't have to sign it tonight. There's one item, the bid form itself, that needed to be signed. We've taken care of that already. It's being held in escrow, depending on your action, do you approve or not approve the CO sale tonight. Once that's done, we'll have everything we need tonight to complete the sale. And if you wanted to stay late and sign the documents tonight, come back tomorrow, whenever you've got some flexibility with that. One last thing, the ordinance has been completed. We did send it to Tracy this afternoon. I understand she's not able to be here tonight. So you do have it in your files and your records, but because of the timing, we weren't able to give that in front of you tonight, but it has been completed.
Thank you very much. So counsel, clearly the both, and important information is what he went over tonight, what Dan went over tonight. So, do you, counsel, do you have any other questions for these gentlemen?
I just, I wanted you to just talk a little bit about the underwriter's discount and the cost of issuance. Just, you know, a little bit of perspective, maybe put it in context, and just talk about how that fits in.
Absolutely. The underwriter's discount specifically is calculated between the price that they bid to buy the bonds from you, and what they sell to the investors. And so that is a calculated amount that they have to provide. After they buy, they send us the re-offering, what's called the re-offering prices. And so that's what's reflected there. And then the cost of issuance is the cost of our fee, bond counsel fee, rating agency fee, document preparation, attorney general approval, and those items are all based on contracts that we have, obviously, with you all, and the rating agencies publish as well.
Dan, because we've got some new council members, why don't you just briefly summarize why the attorney general is included in the list that you've just listed?
Absolutely, and I'll probably have Bart, if he wants to add on to this. But their opinion is part of, they go through and review all the documentation, the notices that you provided to the public for the issuance of certificates, and their approving opinion is what's required. So from tonight, the documents will be turned over to the attorney general. They will review, make sure you did everything in line with state statute, as well as what's required by publication requirements, and then approve it, hopefully with no issues.
Counting on you, Dan, on all that stuff, for sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones, any other questions? A motion and a second, and we can have some discussion.
A move to approve.
A second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis, and a second from Councilmember Rogers. Counsel, do you have any further discussion? We see that this is a total of 4.7 million, and the city manager has addressed why it's been divided into the five-year and 20-year projections. No further, Councilmember Ennis?
I'd like to say great visuals. I'm a visual guy, so this works for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll. Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Ordinance Number 2018-17 is approved. Thank you very much for your work, and I think we'll do one or two more items, and then take a break. If you want my signature tonight, whatever is easiest for y'all. I've got a pen. It's not a big deal. Okay, thank you. And now we are going to 9I. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R2018-67 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract for the rehabilitation of the Old Iron Bridge to Kimble Horn at a cost of $199,700. Attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a appealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Pally?
Good evening, counsel. It's always a pleasure. Tonight, we're asking for the award of the contract for the comprehensive evaluation of the Old Iron Bridge. We're asking for that award to go to Kimble Horn in the amount of $199,700. Now, I want to make a clarification, that this is not actually for the rehabilitation. The rehabilitation of the bridge comes in three parts, the comprehensive evaluation, the engineering, and then the actual repairs themselves. Comprehensive evaluation will identify the repairs on the project, as well as the associated cost for those repairs to go into the next phase. cost for those repairs to go into the next phase. When we did our, back in July, when Council approved the qualified firms for the project list for professional services, we unanimously picked Kimbley Horn as our engineer of record on this project when it comes to bridge work. They're very good at what they do there, from what we can tell, and we're looking forward and very excited to work with them. So with that, I'd like to introduce to you both Brian LaFoy and Shawn Mason of Kimbley Horn, and let them tell you a little bit about what they're going to do.
Yeah. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager Humble. My name's Shawn Mason with Kimbley Horn. I work out of our Austin office here. I'm a municipal server, serving a variety of municipal municipalities in the local central Texas area.
So I'm a municipal server of cities in the area for Kimbley Horn Associates, and I brought in our local bridge expert for Texas, Brian LaFoy, here to help with this project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Happy to be here tonight. My name is Brian LaFoy, and I will be the project manager for this project. I have 25 years of experience in bridge engineering and construction. Started out as a bridge contractor, building bridges, before I started designing them, so I have a pretty good practical perspective on designing them as well. So happy to be here tonight. In addition, I've got countless numbers of bridge rehabilitation projects that I've done over the past 25 years and a handful of historic ones around the country as well. So very experienced in this type of structure and understand the sensitivity of an iconic structure like this that you have in the city of Bastrop. What we're going to be doing is initially, as was explained, is a comprehensive evaluation, basically an inspection first, to go in and not only just identify the deficiencies of the structure from a structural standpoint and from a coding standpoint and any other regulatory issues that we can identify, but also to quantify those so that we're set up to be able to go straight into design and be able to go and design that, and also help staff establish a budget and help them prioritize what the repairs might be. Because those repairs, we might be able to get, for example, 20% of the structure capacity back at a certain cost. We might be able to get 40% at an additional cost, but what does that really buy you if you don't really plan to use it for that need? So it's helping staff kind of work through those kinds of things and be able to come to an established guideline of what those, what that budget needs to be. And when we move into the design phase of that, that's what that will be, is a comprehensive construction set of plans that can go out for bid, and that can be done in a variety of different ways. For a structure like this, we would typically recommend that be done with some kind of qualification-based system procurement, not just low bid. We can also work with staff on a variety of different ways to do that as well, so that you get the best contract that you can out for a structure like this, because it is such a sensitive area, lots of exposure, you want it done right. And then the final step would be getting into the construction phase, and we also are experiencing out on-site, making sure, assisting staff with the oversight of the project to make sure things get done the way they need to get done on a sensitive project like this. So with that, those are kind of the three phases that we anticipate. This first phase is just that inspection phase so that we can set everything up for the next two. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
But before they ask questions, why don't you walk through the process of what we can anticipate and how you're going to build the structures to fix it so it can be designed, and the impact to the river, and the length of time?
Sure.
Because this is not something that's going to be fixed tomorrow.
No, that is correct.
It's going to be a very involved process.
That is correct. So even the first phase of the inspection is quite involved. We're anticipating it taking approximately five days in the field out on-site. And typically, the way bridges are inspected, as far as this goes, on highways, on active highways, where you're having to look underneath, are done in very specific types of vehicles that can articulate and go up underneath in a bucket so that you can inspect those. We can't do that on this bridge right now. We were hoping to be able to set the vehicles on the adjacent vehicular bridge, but the equipment won't articulate enough to let us get underneath to the other side. So everything that we're going to have to do is going to be off a system of ropes and pulleys. So basically picture a spider web underneath the bridge at times with spiders, that'll be us, up and down going on the ropes, being able to make sure we can touch every piece of that bridge. And so we're also going to be looking at the foundations, and so we'll have divers in the water, looking at the foundations and inspecting those, because if you're looking, you're fixing everything at the top, you need to know that everything's okay underneath, too. Typically, on bridges like this, you want to do that every few years anyway. As far as safety to the public, everything will pretty, the bridge will be closed while we're doing that, as far as pedestrian traffic. From a standpoint of river traffic, we will have rescue boats underneath, because we will have manpower that's up underneath on the ropes and around. So what the plan will be for that is the rescue boat will also serve as basically the detour boat, and any pedestrian or river traffic that's going, paddle boats, kayakers, things like that, will be diverted around the work area. So we won't have the whole bridge closed down at one time when we're underneath. We'll kind of systematically move from one side to the other. So that's how we're going to manage the public during that point. Once we get done with the field inspection, we'll also be doing testing on the coatings, because we already know there is lead in the coatings. We anticipate it being a lead abatement project in the end during design. We're going to go ahead and test those levels so that we kind of know what we're dealing with when we get to that point, and that'll factor into how we have to help staff set costs for that and construction processes that we're going to set up for design, because if it is a lead project as we anticipate, it'll have to be a containment system that needs to be designed as a part of construction to enclose the entire bridge so that we contain everything when it's blasted and recoded. So the evaluation process, we'll then go into doing a load rating based on the information that we find and get a good idea of what the capacity of the structure is as it stands today, and then be able to quantify what repairs can be done, and as I mentioned, kind of step that up as far as what capacity we can get back in the bridge. That'll all be developed into a report. That'll be presented to staff. We can sit down with them, and at that point, set budgets and decide, this is what we want to do with the bridge, then move into design. We anticipate that probably, I suspect by the time we get that, it'll be end of October, beginning of November timeframe for that. And then, once that's decided with staff, we can move into the design phase immediately as soon as staff's ready. Design on a project like this will likely last several months, I would say three to four months of design, to get to a point where we can go to construction documents and put it out for bid. Construction on this project is likely going to last approximately a year, depending on how it would need to be phased for seasons, too. I don't anticipate the weather affecting it too much, but when you get down to the coatings and some of the things like that, it is moisture and temperature sensitive, so it will have to be done at certain times of the year. So we need to time it out for that. But overall, I would anticipate about a year from start of construction to final completion.
Mayor and Council, part of the bond package that was just approved is $2 million for this project. You've heard a lot of, we still have a lot of investigation, we have a lot of decisions to make. If it comes back that we don't have all of the money that's needed and additional funding is required because of the way this project will go over two fiscal years, we know in the next three years, there is existing debt capacity that can be sold that will not raise taxes. So we do the best we can to provide you the best information that we have, recognizing that sometimes you don't know what you have until you get in it. So even though this has a lot of play in it, there is an opportunity for us to proceed and come back and bring you options, be able to put price tags to that option, and then I think the policy decision here will be, at what level do you bring this bridge back up to? And then based on that, we will determine what additional funding, if any, is needed. So as I said, this isn't going to be fixed overnight. It's 12- to 14- to 16-month process, and there are times and opportunities to make adjustments to the plan as we move forward.
Council, do you have any questions for Brian? Councilmember Rogers, do you have a question?
Sure.
Mayor Lieutenant Nelson?
I notice we're having an underwater inspection, and just for my own inquisitiveness, what's a level three underwater inspection?
Level three, there's one, two, and three. One is your, it's a cursory inspection, you're not really doing any non-destructive testing, you're not probing, you're doing like that, it's basically a visual. We're not really able to do too much visual in murky water like that. So the level two, which is what we are doing, is more of a hands-on type inspection, identifying general deficiencies that we can find, any scour that's identified. And then the level three is where you're actually taking prospecting tools down there, you're taking measurements underwater, quantifying more of what's going on under there. The reason we're not doing the level three on this project is we do have the previous inspection results that were done several years ago, and based on those, the level of distress that we expect is not going to warrant a level three inspection.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mayor.
Councilmember Jones?
So my question is more for Linda, I think, and we had talked about, ultimately, that bridge was going to be kind of a park, you know, in a pedestrian area. So is there any provision made for you maybe to be working with artists over, I mean, throughout the process to collaborate and, you know, because you're talking about like the level, at what degree do you want to bring it back? You know, do we want a 40% or whatever? So wouldn't that seem logical that maybe that there be a portion or some sort of a design function to this for that pedestrian park?
I mean, anyway. Yes, ma'am, but I don't think that falls into the Kimbley Horn. I think what we have to do is to wait till simple city design gets through with our codes, and we get through with the Main Street rehabilitation project, and then that does become the extension to the park. But I think that there are some additional design elements and some code work that needs to happen downtown so that we can get some clarity on some of the features, and then once that's there, absolutely. We have very much talked about the bridge being a park. It's a wonderful opportunity for the public to engage with the water. So we see that happening, but it's just a product of process and getting to that time. So I could see that happening in fiscal year 20 or 21, depending on the time schedule, what they find, how significant that is, and how long that's going to take us to do that. The timing of those kinds of projects are critical, that you don't want people to get excited about it, and then they have to wait a year to implement. You want that momentum to come. So once Brian and Shawn figure out a schedule, and we have some sense of, yes, we can get this done and we can deliver, then we will certainly back up and make sure that that kind of design work happens. So about the time that we're having a ribbon cutting for the bridge, we're able to move into that phase and really capitalize on the momentum of what it means.
Okay.
Madam City Manager, may I address that as well?
Sure.
So to piggyback on that a little bit, keep in mind that that bridge is registered on the National Historic Bridge Registry, and so there are going to be limitations to what you can do with it as far as an aesthetic appearance. So that's part of what we anticipate going through that process of helping you identify what can and cannot be done.
Perfect.
And so what we would anticipate at this point as part of that initial phase in the inspection is if we know and work with staff, right before we submit our report and say, okay, here's some conceptual things that we might want to do, then we can at least incorporate that into some budgeting numbers, at least how they affect it structurally at that point.
That was your point.
And so that can be done for later on. Then during the design phase, that's when we would need to know what the desires are for that, whether it would be a park or things like that. But we'd all, all the plans will need to go through the Texas Historical Commission and get approval through that, because it is on the National Register of Historic Places.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there, because that's something the whole council talked about.
Absolutely.
And we're super excited about y'all doing the bridge and finally accepting responsibility for that, and then making it also one of the best parks in the city, because it's right over the water. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Absolutely, and, you know, the extreme example is clearly, we don't want to put money in a bridge for an 18-wheeler to drive over it that's never going to drive over it.
Exactly.
Likewise, we don't want to say, well, we really would like to have a planter box, but sorry, we weren't counting on a dead load right there.
Yeah.
So there's a logical balance, and it sounds like with the historic things that we have to comply with, you're just, I hear Councilmember Jones wanting to make sure that we're not doing anything out of order and make sure we're getting the very best bang for the buck. And that was a great question. Thank you. Council, anybody else have any questions for Brian? I would be interested in being a spider. I have no interest in being a diver, because we're not supposed to be breathing underwater. So Council, are you clear with what you're approving? With a motion and a second, we can have further discussion.
Move to approve is presented.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. I'm really glad it was the two of you. You guys, there's, it's been a while, hasn't it, Mr. Peterson, to wanting to get this done? All righty, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Resolution number R2018-67 is passed and approved unanimously. We are going to go to item 9E. And KSA, you should be designing a wastewater treatment plant. Do not think that you have to stay. You have work to do. Get to it. Consider action to approve resolution number R2018-66 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract for the installation of generators at city lift stations to CF McDonald Electric LLC in the amount of $184,169 attached to Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a project we've worked on for the last year, year and a half. It's part of the storm event we had in May 2015 and part of a FEMA grant to having generators installed at the two locations you can see, one at the Gilz Branch Lift Station east of the river, and one at Central, which is two of our main lift stations that pump everything to the current wastewater treatment plant. I have Bradley here from BEFCO, if you have any questions about the project. This is the second set of generators that we've put in for a grant like this, so we're pretty familiar with it, and we're just here to get it approved, and the money is already budgeted.
Okay, money is budgeted, it's grant money, and are you going to be, what's the life expectancy of these generators?
That is a question for Bradley. Hold on one second.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Ms. Humble. Basically, I'm a generator project, obviously electrical and mechanical related, so not a long-term project, but at the same time fulfilling the needs for at least the 10 years that I'm aware of. For a lift station, it's a little more critical from a sewer environment, so just one of those things that we'll have to keep an eye on, placement and those kind of things that we've worked out with our electrical engineer.
Council, it's important to realize that the wastewater treatment plant that we were talking about, this lift station helps get things to that wastewater treatment plant. So I didn't want anyone to think that because we're doing the wastewater treatment plant that then we're not going to need lift stations anymore. It's, gravity still works, and you still have to fight against it sometimes. Okay, here's the trick question. When I looked at the bids, there was a lump sum for the fence around it, and the CF McDonald bid $35 a linear foot, which is not a lump sum. So how many feet is the fence?
The fence is 220 feet, which puts it in the ballpark of around, let's see here, 180, let's see, what is that, total, 184, 169. And you can see total from one through two was 176, so that puts you in the ballpark of around $8,000 for that 220-foot of fence, which includes gates, those kind of things.
Okay, great, because I was, I was just, it was a little bit of an apple and an orange, and I was just trying to make sure, because I really do read this stuff that you guys put together.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all of my questions. Council, do you have any other questions? Mayor Lieutenant Nelson?
Yeah, real quick, Mr. Jobe, the, is it grant program, is there any matching funds required?
Yes, that's what we have budgeted, is the matching funds.
Okay.
Yes, we have a portion of, I believe it's 25% of the overall cost.
Thanks.
And just to answer your question a little farther, we actually have all the generators at the lift stations and the water plants on a yearly maintenance, so that we'll see things as they come up. We have them all in a contract, and these will be added as they're installed.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, trade us one quick question, just for my own reference here. How often do these generators exercise?
Every week.
Every week?
Yes.
Cool, thank you.
Councilmember Ennis?
And these funds are budgeted 2018?
Yes, sir. And part of the, well, let me just say this, all of the grants that we have have matching, the matches paid for, either budgeted in fund balance or with the approval of the debt of the $1.8 million you just did, every grant match that you are supposed to have, that we know the amount, is now covered.
But these specific funds will be carried over to fiscal year 19?
Yes. They are part of the CIP, but for all of you concerned about grants and do we have our matches, every grant that we know, whether it's a detention pond, a generator, or a trail, if there is a match, we're responsible for, and we know the amount of money, it's covered.
Thank, yes, sir.
Council, any further questions for Mr. Jobe? Move to approve? I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Resolution number R-2018-66 is approved unanimously. Good job, Bradley, and you too, don't feel like you have to stay. You're welcome to stay, but you do not have to stay. Council, it's 8:47, it's been a little over an hour. Are you ready to keep going or do you need a break? All right, let's keep going. I think, yeah, okay, I was going to say, I was going to see where we at. Cleared everybody out. Do you want to go back to 9A and do those or do you want to go all the way back to the presentations that we skipped? I don't care. There we go. We are going back to 5A. That council is on page two and 5A is discuss the proposed fiscal year 2019 budget and provide feedback to staff. City Manager?
Mayor and Council, this was just one more opportunity after you had time to read all of the budget numbers and materials to see if you had any questions. I've tried to reach out to all of you to answer any specific questions that you have, but this is not the last shot. But one of the things that I promised you was a completed budget with page numbers and tabs. And so, our goal is to do that on September 11th. So, if there are any last-minute changes that you have an interest in, I would appreciate gathering that. Not that we can't unbind and rebind, but the mayor has specifically requested a bound budget, so we would like to get the pages finalized so we're not constantly having to undo and redo your books. So, at this point in time, I'm interested in any feedback or questions you may have.
Councilmember Rogers?
Well, first I'd like to thank you for taking the time this morning with me and answering all my little basic questions I had going through this huge budget process you brought to us.
Councilmember Jones?
I just, I want to thank Linda for the way you put the budget together, how much effort and time and just the clarity and transparency. I really, I don't even think me saying how much I appreciate it covers how much work you've done on this, but thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate that. There's still some documents that are outstanding, that are word documents, they don't have numbers in it. It's the transmittal letter that really captures where we've been, where we're going, the strategic visioning piece. We're right now going through, trying to summarize all of the great work that has already been accomplished on the comprehensive plan so that the community can appreciate that that document is not only a living and breathing document, but it's being executed at a fairly rapid rate and a big chunk of that will be taken care of this evening. So, we owe you a reconciliation of that. We will also be included, the work that we've completed this year and then the work that is now before us in a work plan, all of that will be captured and identified in the non-focus areas that you provided. So, when you get this budget document on the 11th of September, all the vision pieces will be there and all the moving parts will then be put into some kind of strategic format for y'all to then communicate to the public that you not only talk a good story, but you walk your talk. Y'all are to be commended at all of the problems that have been brought to your attention to a person. Y'all have been committed that you're going to fix those problems and y'all absolutely do what you say you're going to do. And I think this budget, when captured in that way, the public will really appreciate the level of leadership that exists in this council. We as staff appreciate the level of work, holy smoke, that you are putting forward to us. I mean, we sit around our staff meeting and I go, oh my God, we've got all we can do and y'all come up with something absolutely fabulous next week and we add it to the plate. So, I think when we can get our hands around all of this and people really appreciate what the next three to five years look like from the CIP to the vision y'all have provided, Alan and I visited about this before the council meeting. It's truly an exciting time to be a part of Bastrop, to really see where we're going, the level of respect and unity that y'all have and the commitment to this community. I think all of that will be captured not only in numbers, but in the words aspect of the budget.
Thank you, City Manager. I appreciate you mentioning strategic part because I was going to say, maybe my book didn't get it, but I am still looking forward to seeing the objectives that have been completed from a percentage standpoint, just as a means of updating the comprehensive plan. Council, any, and the council meeting is on September 11th. Are you saying we won't get the book till that night or will we get the book on the Friday before?
The budget will be in the packet, but there will be a hard copy at your table that will be tabbed, that becomes your reference.
Okay, okay. I just wanted council's expectations to be clear. Councilmember Jones?
Well, I just wanted to say one more thing and that is, one thing I've really liked about the way that the city, one of several things, but the thing I'm going to point out, the one of the things I really like about the way the city is doing business is that Linda has taken the opportunity to surround herself with specialists and fill in gaps with people that are really good at what they do, they're real, and you've heard that from the presentations. And instead of bringing on more staff to manage perhaps some of these issues, you've made the choice to surround us with specialists and consultants. And I really like that way of doing business because that makes you instantly as good as the people you surround yourself with. So, I just wanted to bring that up as one of the ways that we're doing business as a city that I really like.
All right, council, any further? There's not an action item for us, it's just, I know the city manager, if you think of something tonight or tomorrow, if you've got notes in your book, make sure you have given an opportunity to go over them. It'll be easier for all of us if those corrections are made now. So, with that, we are on item 5V, discuss process and timetable for changing speed limit on Spring and Farm Streets east of State Highway 95 and CP Johnson Lane. Chief Altgelt is going to present on this council. I'll remind you that at our last council meeting, we had a conversation about the zoning for the corner, which to me is the northeast corner of 150 and 95. And it turns out, even though we are the almighty council, we can't just change the speed limit. So, Chief Altgelt?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. As the mayor said, back on August 14th, we had this come up during the public meeting about changing the zoning and I'm going to go ahead and just take control. Some of the concerns that were discussed were, took place on Spring Street, Farm Street and CP Johnson Lane and those concerns were high speeds for vehicles that are traveling, the volume or the number of vehicles that were traveling on these streets. This was concern, was, they believe came as a result of traffic coming down south on Highway 95, possibly from the high school or coming into town. And at high-peak traffic areas, what would happen is there would be a congregation of vehicles that were stopped at the red light waiting to proceed through the intersection. And in lieu of waiting to stop for the intersection, these vehicles would turn left or proceed east either on Farm Street in the 1700 block or in the 1700 block of Spring Street. They would proceed to CP Johnson and take a right, travel south down to Loop 150. Therefore, in effect, avoiding the traffic signal that's there, but also having a higher density of traffic that's in the area and the concerns for not just the volume of traffic, but the speed of the traffic that was going through the neighborhood. So, a little Speed 101. In Texas, all speed limits are considered primatia limits. Primatia limits are those limits which on the face of it are deemed to be safe and reasonable for the weather conditions. So, anything over 30 miles per hour in an urban district would be deemed to be not safe, but 30 miles and below would be deemed to be safe and prudent. The primatia speed limits that we primarily deal with in a municipality are going to be in the urban district, which is 30 miles an hour, or in an alley, 15 miles an hour. The Texas Transportation Code and the Administrative Code allow a city to alter primatia speed limits. Normally, what does require is a traffic study, which is also referred to as an engineering or a traffic investigation or a speed study. And so, when we conduct this, then that gives us the ability to measure traffic that takes place and then make a recommendation to change the primatia speed limit from 30 miles per hour to a lower speed if we deem that to be appropriate. One thing that we can do without the speed study though is we could pass an advisory speed limit. The problem with an advisory speed limit is the nice yellow sign that goes up there and says, please travel at this speed, but when the drivers disregard that, there is no punitive action, there is no enforcement action that can take place. So, you'll see that at some places, warning people that the curve is not a safe speed, but an officer can't sit up there and enforce traffic law while they're at that location to enforce it. So, it's a, it's kind of like a veil threat, if you will, or a veil warning to not proceed. So, what took place effective today was Public Works went out, deployed traffic counters on Spring Street, Farm Street and CP Johnson Lane. The second thing that the police department is doing is they're conducting what we call close patrols and they started that as early as August 15th after hearing the problems that took place. And while time allows and we have the resources available, the officers are sitting out there and they're monitoring traffic and taking enforcement action when that's appropriate to do so. But from today till next Tuesday, Public Works has our traffic counters out in three different locations. Location one is just north of Chestnut Street or Loop 150 on CP Johnson Lane. Traffic counter number two is in the 1700 block of Spring Street, which is just east of 95. And number three is located on Farm Street, also just east of Highway 95. And what these traffic counters will do for the next seven days is by hour, 24 hours a day, we'll be able to monitor the number of vehicles that are traveling through, over these traffic counters, what type of vehicle they are, whether they're a motorcycle, a sedan, a heavy truck, a school bus and what those speeds are. And from that, we can do several things. We can talk about what the volume of traffic is that's going through there and we can also discuss what those speed limits are and then what types of vehicles are going through there. So, after we gather this information, it's our intent to come back on September 11th, provide you with information we received from these, these studies and then get the direction you deem is appropriate to pursue. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Chief Altgelt. Council, I'll share with you that the city attorney and I were at the TML Municipal Policy Summit last week and the primatia speed was discussed. And in fact, one of the legislation that they talked about endorsing was reducing it to 25 miles per hour. But one of the folks that stood up and spoke said, I just want to be clear, we have to do a study to prove it's safer to drive at a slower speed. And she acted somewhat confused about that and so one of the next people that stood up said, welcome to Texas. So, it's, it's, a lot of communities face this, you got to do the whole study. It seems to me, when you, when you look at the use, it's residential, you know, it would seem like it would be an easy logical thing to just post a lower speed limit, but we do need to follow it by the law so it can be enforceable.
And my personal opinion is sometimes we're concerned that we may lower the speed so low that it may be an enforcement ability so that some people may use that as a revenue generating opportunity. So, they want to balance the true impact for public safety as opposed to somebody maybe attempted to do that for other reasons.
The question that I have is can we post no left turn off of CP Johnson?
Can we post no left turn off of CP Johnson?
Because I don't know anybody that needs to be turning left on 150 at CP Johnson, given the, given the site limits and the speeds.
Yeah.
Yes, it'd be no different than I would think than us posting a right turn only off of Alley A and Alley B.
So, will you bring back the speed limit unless it's easier to do? I personally would like to see us say, you can't turn left.
One of the things that we did, we met recently, Trey helped me, I think it was last week, but time blends together. We met with Tech dot and we had a conversation about this particular intersection. They are certainly amenable to working with us, so if you don't have the jurisdiction, they are absolutely willing to work with us. But the one thing they suggested that I think is very appropriate, and that is if you say no left turn, that we put some kind of curb in there that forces you to turn right onto CB Johnson and forces you to turn right. So, it isn't a sign you can discount if the traffic allows you to turn left, we'll just fix it where turning left is not an option.
I believe that, my memory of the conversation and we knew at the time that we were talking about zoning, but the neighborhood had concerns and I believe they, if it was a no left turn, it completely defeats the purpose of cutting through the neighborhood. So, you might do it the first time and nanny nanny on you because now you're going to have to go all the way back through the light a second time. So, I don't think the neighborhood was opposed to turning left. I personally don't believe that is a safe turn to turn left. So, if you wouldn't mind including that in your recommendation when you come back to us on September 11th, I would appreciate it.
Yes.
And I would just assume post the sign, maybe it takes us a little while to get the curb and everything done, but I'd like the neighborhood to see us making some decisions and moving forward. Sounds like Mr. Jobe doesn't like my suggestion, he's coming forward. Well, Trey.
Just want to expand on that meeting with Tech side. We actually, if QuickTrip was to build, they're required to do a TIA. They also laid some options out where they would have to do some highway improvements if that was going to happen. And they said, the choice was for them to come off of, help me, CP Johnson, then those funds may be used for that as well. That study will come up and say, we need to have this and that'll be done as part of the construction.
I appreciate that. Thank you and thank you for bringing that to our attention, but I think the sign's cheap and I'd like to respond to the neighborhoods quickly.
I agree.
How long will it take us to put a curb cut? Because I appreciate what the mayor's trying to do, but I want action, not just talk. So, with the sign and the curb, how long would it take us to permanently solve the problem?
So, what I'm going to do is measure the road because I want to make sure that it's not 17 feet wide and then we put a two-foot curb and now nobody can drive down it. So, let me take a look at that and I can have that for you on the floor as well.
And you think we'll remember what you said, so you'd like to look at it before you tell us?
That's correct, yes, please.
Okay. Council, are you comfortable with September 11th?
I have learned my lesson, that's right.
Thank you very much, Chief Altgelt. That was a great presentation.
Oh, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Will you go back a few screens to where you, where you have all this, see how they're in different lengths? Does it make a difference? See how, okay, on number three, it's real close to 95? Well, that actually, because I can't tell by the drawing how close that's to that intersection. For say if it was in the middle, would they be driving faster? You know what I'm saying? Because they're getting closer to it.
It depends if they're going eastbound or if they're coming westbound and they're approximately, they're at the same location where the speed limit sign is posted, so they're right across the road perpendicular to the sign, so 30 miles an hour, they would be there when they come through there. So, I see.
I was just curious if they'd be going faster if they're a little further up.
That graphic is not exact, he's just trying to tell you it's close. So, that's not exactly where the.
It's not to scale, but I will tell you, I drove it today and both on Farm Street and on Spring Street, there are speed limit signs and adjacent to the speed limit signs are where the traffic counters are located. So, I think the other thing that we'll see on CP Johnson is how many, how much traffic is actually traveling on CP Johnson? And then the other thing that I'll do is I'll pull a history of how many accidents we've had at that intersection so that we can also take that into account when we decide what action you want to take.
Councilmember Rogers is making a great point. If it's so close to the intersection, you're not going to know what speed they're really doing down the street, but I think they're saying that, they're just trying to show us where they are. They're just backing away from the intersection. Great question, great question.
Trey, do we have two more sets of counters?
We have, yes.
Okay, then put a traffic, a set of traffic counters halfway between Farm and Spring and a set of traffic counters between Spring and Chestnut on CP Johnson and you will address Councilmember Rogers' concerns.
And we can verify these locations when we go to measure the roads, make sure. Again, this is just my format, they can see, it's not Jim's.
Right. She's making a good point. If you're slowing down to stop or you're just pulling off of it, she wants you to be getting a representative. I think, I think the people who put it out had better skills than the person who drew the little yellow line.
So, you only have to have one, you don't have to have two counters this month, that be it.
Yes, ma'am.
No, but that's a great question. There's no point in getting bad data. It's like taking traffic counts on a holiday, you know, then everybody, nobody believes the data. So, we'll see you on September 11th and it'll be hopefully an item for individual consideration because we'll be ready to make some decisions.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Absolutely. Mayor Proton Nelson?
This probably goes without saying, during y'all's analysis, if there's other traffic calming recommendations y'all make through this analysis, but certainly bring them back. I think anything that we can do to benefit the neighborhood as well as the general population would be great.
So, let me ask this question. If we find that there is a disproportionate number of big trucks, would you consider passing a no-truck route through that neighborhood?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All righty. What else did we forget to ask you, Chief Algelt?
I just wanted to throw something else out there. And if I'm not supposed to talk about this, then just tell me after I've mentioned it. You know, I just want us to look at taking that stop sign down that's at, what is it? Farm and...
Chambers.
Chambers. That's just like, this makes no sense to me, so we talk about that at some point, about taking that down.
How about we solve that problem, and when Chief Algelt brings you back these traffic calming measures, that it includes authority to remove the sign, because those signs are set by policy. So perhaps you can include that, and then it will be removed.
We'll repeal that section, yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Okay, great job, Chief Algelt. We're moving on to staff and board reports. Received presentation on the un-audited monthly financial report for the period ending July Here she comes. Counsel, you're on page 106 in your packet.
Good evening, I'm Margaret Selbernagle, I'm standing in for Tracy Waldron, who could not be here this evening. This is the comprehensive monthly financial report as of July 2018, and we'll just move through this rather quickly. I think the most significant thing about this is there's nothing really significant about it. We've been on positive trends all year, we're moving towards the end of our year, and we're positive, and of course, you're familiar with the green, yellow, red for our trends, so we're trending positive on all our funds. We can move through this pretty quickly. These are some of our economic indicators. If y'all have reviewed your packet, you'll see that we're doing pretty well with nationally, the Texas retail sales, I think we're actually trending better than general Texas retail sales right now. We can move on through. We have our revenues, again, doing pretty well. The only thing we have in the red is the impact fees, and that is pretty cyclical. We don't get those at regular intervals, that's tied to construction usually. On our expenses, again, we're doing pretty well. The only non-green is the Hunter's Crossing pit, and I think we had some extra legal fees we weren't counting on. And general fund, revenues versus expenses, you can see the, of course, the blue is more of the property taxes that we get in the middle of the winter, so we're leveling out real well, but still in the positive. And then we have sales tax revenue, doing pretty well, better than we had anticipated, I think. So strong on that for now. And then our property tax revenue, of course, that's mostly in the wintertime, but again, And water wastewater, doing pretty well there. If anybody has any questions, just stop me, Linda can help with any questions if we have them.
Margaret, I think what we say at this point in time is water wastewater, BP&amp;L are all doing better than projected, because it's been hot, we're selling electricity, we're selling water, and it is all good. Y'all have spent quite a bit of time understanding the numbers, and unless you have a question for Margaret, I don't know that there's much else to add, and I think she summed it up when the most extraordinary thing about this is there's nothing extraordinary to say, as it should be.
So if there are...
Counsel, any question for Margaret? Great job, Margaret, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good job. All right, Counsel, that concludes 6A. We've already done 6B. We're at citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, ma'am.
I didn't think so. We are done with citizen comments, we have already taken care of our consent agenda. It is 9:10, can we keep going?
Okay.
All righty, somebody let me know if we need a break. All right, Mr. Irvin, you've been waiting all night, we're ready for you. 9A, consider action to approve resolution number R2018-61 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract to Tech Line Construction LLC to install an air switch and reconductor at the line from Hazel to Martin Luther King Jr. at a cost not to exceed $35,000. Attached to Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Irvin, Mr. Jobe, whoever.
I'm going to provide Mr. Irvin with some technical support, and he's going to be my expert in case I have any questions this evening. So if you've noticed, some of our staff names have been different on the staff reports, and different people have come up. We're trying to get familiar with each other's work enough with all of this extra CIP that we can all talk about it in the same language. So we're handing staff reports off to them, and saying, "Hey, you want to do this tonight?" "No, absolutely." So sorry for the confusion, but you tricked me up when we switched the agenda items, and now we're even. So let's go back to, sorry. Basically, this is the first of three contracts, and they're with Tech Line, they're done under LCA's overall general contracts, so all the state and federal guidelines have been met for purchasing. But basically, they're going to do some reconductor of the line down Pine Street to MLK, and take care of, put in an air switch. And from what Mr. Irvin tells me, this helps provide redundancy in that area, make sure that City Hall has an alternate source of power, it also takes care of Mill Elementary and the Convention Center. So that's part of the downtown feed. Any other questions?
Counsel, any questions? Motion?
A motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
I second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Resolution number R2018-61 passes unanimously. We're now on item 9B, consider action to approve resolution number R2018-62 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract to Tech Line Construction LLC to rebuild approximately 3,300 feet of the line west of the intersection of Water and Pecan Streets at a cost not to exceed $54,000. Attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date.
Can you explain, before you start, how Water and Pecan Street intersect, when I don't think they do?
So let me switch to this, I don't disagree, so I'm in as a pitcher. So this is better than my traffic counter map, but...
There we go. Anything would be better than your traffic counter map.
I was confused too, so this is what Curtis and I talked about. It's actually, the intersection at Water and Walnut is where, you see it now, it's going north, and then it also intersects with Walnut from Main to Jefferson Street. And this does the same thing, except provides the redundancy that I talked about earlier downtown. So it takes care of the courthouse, the Alley B parking lot, and a few other businesses that are kind of scattered in throughout there, and they're actually upgrading this to some larger lines for three-phase power, so that everything here is available, this whole corridor downtown, with all these improvements that he's making, will allow for commercial growth if we decide to change and go that way.
From reading the backup, it looks like this stuff, both the prior item and this item are funded out of the system study improvement account within BP&amp;L, so they've got the money, he's doing the right thing, he wants his system to work.
That's correct. This is part of its overall five, sorry, this section's part of a five-year study, and now they're just taking care of those items that are in there.
Counsel, any further questions for Mr. Jobe or Mr. Irvin?
Move to approve.
A motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. Resolution number R2018-62 passes unanimously. We're now on the top of page four, item 9C, consider action to approve resolution number R2018-63 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract to Tech Line Construction LLC to rebuild approximately 1,900 feet of line along Hill Street from Cedar to Spring at a cost not to exceed $46,000. Attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
So again, this is the third contract we talked about earlier, and those all combined were over the city manager's limit, which is why they were brought here tonight. And again, to have another map, you can see, this one's a lot easier from the explanation, from Hill Street, from Cedar to Spring, and this actually does exactly the same thing I talked about prior, and it takes care of Mina Elementary. You can see it runs right up between the schools and that residential area. So again, there's a backup power source in case something happens, because everybody knows the power goes out of school for two hours, all the kids get out, and everybody has to miss work, so those things can be prevented, that's what Mr. Irvin's all about, and here we are.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Rogers, do you have a question? Okay. I just want to make sure...
It's good to see these things are already budgeted, so I move to approve.
Absolutely.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson, I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Irvin, this would not be going if we didn't all trust and know that you are running a stellar operation. So I just want to personally thank you for all the work you do to make sure that BP&amp;L is a reliable service to the community.
I appreciate your support, and it's supposed to correct tonight. You've done a good job.
Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. Resolution number R2018-63 passes unanimously. Great job, Mr. Irvin. We're now moving on to item 9D, consider action to approve resolution number R2018-65 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract for the annual concrete improvements to 304 Construction LLC, attached as Exhibit A, priced according to the bid proposal sheet, attached as Exhibit B, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, this bid, this contract, we've got a 304 construction, and as you can see, there's not a set total amount on there, because what they'll do is augment staff, basically. During that RFP, this was set for a specific project, which was budgeted this year, and the funds will carry over to next, for the trail that would come down Main Street, make its way to Delgado Park, all the way over Olas and Highway and back up to Bob Bryant, tying those parks in together. That was the original bid, but we expanded it in the RFP and added ribbon curb, some flat work, and additional things like that for a concrete service. So we'd have somebody on staff as an augmentation, so when we need something to do something in a hurry, like pour that curb, we can just say, "Here's what it is per square foot, we have a price built in," and go from there.
Okay, you said trail, and that means different things to different people. I think you meant sidewalk.
I meant sidewalk, yes, I'm sorry.
So just clarify.
And it's for traffic safety.
How many bidders did you have?
We only had one vendor.
And see, that makes me a little...
It does.
And it's crummy work, though, that's why nobody wants to bid it.
That is why you only have one bidder, and in one, two, three, in four cities I've been in, there's only one guy that does this, because nobody else will do it. And there's always that one guy that will come in and do this little work, and there's enough to keep him and his crew busy. But in DeSoto, Rowlett, Duncanville, and here, I don't think we ever had more than the one guy that would do it, and his name was Chris. In DeSoto and Duncanville, because Chris did this, because nobody else would do this.
I can also tell you that over 25 of the RFPs went out, but only one bid came back in. So we had a lot of participation, just nobody was bidding.
So does 304 Construction have someone named Chris that works for them?
No.
The red light funds were identified in last year's budget on page 31, and it was for $311,000. And I understand that they're giving you unit prices, because you're going to put out the work, but you're going to have an agreed price ahead of time.
That is correct.
But help me circle back around to the 311 that's in the last year's budget, and where do I find it in this year's budget?
I believe it's designated fund number 102, all of the designated funds that include red light camera, which is traffic safety. That is a fund designated for specific uses based on state law and what they're authorized for. So in, it's a culmination of all of the funds, the money doesn't go away, so it's not like the general fund, it doesn't roll up into the general fund to be reallocated. Red light traffic money is always red light traffic money. And so we have designated the money that is available for traffic safety in three places. One was the street signs, they've been installed this year, everybody's thrilled about it. That money has been spent, won't be replaced. Y'all authorized some striping with that money. Trey's crew has already spent that money, and now has identified a quarterly striping schedule, and we're doing that from a maintenance standpoint in-house. The last and final piece that was appropriated in the red light traffic fund was for pedestrian safety. In March of 2017, when I arrived, you might recall, we had a lady that was pregnant and had been walking her child that was in a stroller, and she had to use the street, because we were missing sidewalks, and she was hit, fortunately not seriously injured. And at that point, staff, I mean, I'm sorry, Counsel, really said, "We've got to fix the gaps." And so under the auspice of pedestrian and public safety, we have done that. In the letter, the budget letter that you get in your final document, we'll make reference to that. But just the way this fund is accounted, that red light money is just that, red light money, because we're no longer collecting red light camera fees, because we no longer have it. It's considered a one-time source of money, and once it is spent for this particular source, that money will be alleviated or be spent, and the project will be completed. So that red light camera money will only be used for sidewalks, and for the special projects that Trey has mentioned, there will be alternative funding sources depending on what fund is generating the need. We'll cover that.
I appreciate that, and when I look at the designated fund number 102 in the budget book, it might, it's all in one page, and it's several different funds, and like the PEG fund can only be spent on certain things. We may want another page that lets us know where are we, or if possible, but...
It suits me fine. You're chief financial officer, it creates some accounting challenges, because it's just not big money in any one of them. And so we just condense it into a fund to be efficient, but we can certainly provide...
Then I take that back. I'm not trying to make it harder on Tracy, but the sentence above it, we may just want to add a few words so that we're clear about what's in it and what this year is intended to be spent on that budget.
Yes, ma'am, we can certainly do that.
Okay. Counsel, are you okay with that? Okay, Counsel, any, I hate only having one bidder, but I wouldn't have bid this work. It's nasty work.
It is, it'll be driveway replacements for some of the drainage work that we do, it'll be ribbon curb, so it's, there's several, there's a decent amount of funds there, and you can make a living on it, but you're going to...
You have to just want to do it. Yeah. And then I'm hoping that you guys, and oh my gosh, could you have any more backup on this one item? Did you, I didn't know if I would ever get to the end of it. Oh, holy cow. It's important that 304 Construction LLC understand that not only are they doing flat work around town, but they are also the face of the city to the customers, and that work taking place in front of someone's business, in front of someone's house, we are looking forward to not getting angry phone calls about, "You've blocked me in," and all that kind of good stuff.
Absolutely. We'll be out there every step of the way and make sure that that's communicated before they get started.
Part of what we're doing, Mayor and Counsel, is we recognize that there are some additional processes that are needed, not only with this concrete and flat work, but the street maintenance that we do. And so one of the things we'll be addressing in September, and not pick on this, but to give you an example, when we're in an area and we're doing street maintenance, where's my garbage going to be picked up today? Where's the mail going to be picked up today? If we dig up your St. Augustine grass, are you going to put St. Augustine grass back? So we've already started having those conversations. Trey's going to make sure all of his crew has business cards, and we're going to have some customer service training before we step out there, so that everybody on the job advocates on behalf of our citizens. And if you drive by and see one of our contractors, and they're not tending to their business, and you know better, you're authorized to stop and make sure it takes care of it. So we're going to do everything we can do to reduce the aggravation, because it's not lost on any of us, when it's in front of your house, impacting your life. And I used to wear super cute shoes, so I tell my Public Works staff, "When it impacts my super cute shoes, we got a problem." So we're going to work hard to make sure that super cute shoes are not impacted, and you don't get a phone call.
Correct.
Okay, I appreciate that. Any further discussion or questions on the flat work?
I just want to say thank you, manager, for those added words out there because it really makes an impact on all of us. It's like we've discussed in the past, we have schools, elementary kids sit on the sidewalk, and we're doing fire drills. And the city's done an excellent job of keeping that area clean because the kids do come out on fire drills, and that's where they have to sit while they're conducting a fire drill. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Any further questions for Mr. Joe?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution number R two oh one eight dash six five is unanimously approved. Counsel, we are now moving to item nine H. We are going to conduct a public hearing, the first public hearing, on the proposed ad valorem tax rate for fiscal year 2018-2019. And that rate is point five six four zero.
So, Mayor and Council, I've presented the proposed budget for fiscal year 2018-2019 that included a proposed tax rate of point five six four per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Truth in taxation is a concept embodied in the Texas Constitution and the tax code that requires local taxing units to make taxpayers aware of tax rate proposals. When a tax, when a proposed tax rate exceeds the rollback rate, or the effective rate, whichever is lower, the taxing unit's government body must hold two public hearings to allow the public the opportunity to express their views on the proposed tax rate. City staff is proposing a tax rate up to point five six four zero, including an operations and maintenance that we refer to as O and M tax rate of point three six nine one, and a debt service tax rate we refer to as INS, that's interest in sinking, of point one nine four nine per one hundred dollars in taxable value. The taxable rate, which is the total tax rate needed to raise the same amount of property tax revenue from the same properties in both 2017 tax year and 2018 tax year, has been calculated by city staff and certified by the Bastrop Central Appraisal District to be point five five three four. The rollback rate, which is the maximum rate that can be applied and not subject to a rollback petition, has been calculated by staff certified by the Bastrop Central Appraisal District to be point five eight zero nine. These rates will be published in the local newspaper, the city's website, and the government access cable channel as required by law. There will be a second public hearing on Tuesday, September eleventh, 2018, at six thirty PM. The public hearing will be held in the City Council chambers located in City Hall at thirteen eleven Chestnut, which is the location that we're currently at. At each public hearing, the government body must announce the date, time, and place of the meeting at which it will vote on the tax rate. The City of Bastrop will vote on the tax rate on September twenty-fifth, 2018, at six thirty PM at City Hall, thirteen eleven Chestnut Street, Bastrop, Texas, seven eight six oh two.
Thank you, city manager. I am officially opening the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on the tax rate? City secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, madam secretary. I am now closing the public hearing. Counsel, we have no further action on that item. We are moving to page...
Could I, oh, yes, go ahead. If you don't mind, this is a specific question from one of our citizens, and they just asked if we could have a little discussion contrasting the Bastrop, and this is based on the article written by Brandon that was in the newspaper, the Bastrop tax rate at five point six four versus the Austin tax rate at four point, excuse me, point four six five one.
I can sum it up very easily. It's called the difference in taxable value on the tax rolls. If we had Austin's tax base, taxable value, and access to all of their resources, it might be an opportunity for us to have an eleven cent tax rate. But that's comparing apples and oranges, pineapples and kiwis. You can't compare a city of ninety-nine hundred people and compare it to one of the size of Austin and come out with anything other than two specific sets of numbers.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Counsel, it might also be of interest to note that of the proposed budget, that the property tax at the rate that we have set is thirty point seven percent of the general fund, and sales tax is forty-two point three percent of the general fund. So one of the other comments would be that if we were to try to replace all of that sales tax with property tax, it would have to have more than doubled to be able to replace that.
It's about twenty-one or twenty-two cents, mayor, to replace our current sales tax with property tax.
Okay, that public hearing is closed. We are moving on to page five. If I'm keeping good notes, I think we are at nine K. Counsel, I'm going to check with you again. It's nine thirty. Everybody okay? Councilmember Ennis, you want to take a break, or are you okay? All right. We're at nine K. Consider action and approve resolution number R two oh one eight dash seven two of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, making determinations regarding certain project-specific exceptions and/or exemptions as provided by emergency ordinance twenty eighteen dash one, section eight.
Good evening. For this item, we do not have anything at this time. We still, staff is continuing to, we've received some formal requests for exceptions, and we're working through those, doing the research to issue those letters. We haven't had anything we've had to say no to yet. And then, we've met with several people that are looking at the exemption process and should be turning in applications soon for that.
Excellent. I think Mayor Protem Nelson may have a comment on this item.
I just, when a request for an exemption comes forward, I think we may have to suspend the rules. Is that what you're...
Yeah, I think we can go ahead and do it now and then be done with it.
Yeah, in order to comply with our own adopted rules of order, and to ensure that we adhere to our promise to move this process along, I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules that we adopted in June, to, so that we can move forward on this project as we've promised, so.
So what Mayor Protem Nelson is saying is that this is verbiage that the public will see on every agenda, every time City Council meets. And unlike most of the time, when they see as an item for individual consideration, they can find backup in the packet. We are knowingly saying, it's okay, we're suspending our rules, and we want to be able to do that. Every time this item shows, there will not be backup in the packet because we're wanting to make a timely decision with information. If there's something that we need to vote on, the information will be brought forward by the planning staff at the time that we're voting.
And Mayor and Council, just for open and transparency, for those watching at home, the rules in question are rules of procedure that are adopted every July by the City Council that dictate how the agenda and the agenda process works.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bill.
Mayor, I want to amend my own motion to suggest that this motion be applicable to each time this is on the agenda.
Excellent. So I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson that we suspend the rules on this item anytime it's on an agenda moving forward.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson, and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any discussion regarding that we vacate the rules on this item?
No, I just have a question for Ms. Bills.
Perfect. Is it pertaining to the not doing, following the rules on this one?
No.
Can we vote on that, and then we can ask Ms. Bills a question? Okay, is there any further discussion on not following the rules? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. That motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Jones?
Okay, so my question to you is, are we running into problems with people that are coming in, let's say, wanting to build a fence, put up a deck? Are you getting a lot of, like, traffic or backup on that?
We haven't as of yet, no. We've met with several people that are wishing to build single-family homes, and we've discussed the process with them. And so far, no one's had any major concerns. We are looking into a couple other issues of whether this applies, you know, in certain areas of the ETJ or with other certain permits.
So, for example, if somebody comes in and they want to build a fence or a deck, what does that look like? Is it something that they typically can get approval of right there, or is there some sort of...
If they come in with one of those kinds of projects, they'll have to give us some kind of plan of what they're planning to do so we can go out and look at that project. Because depending on where it is, it may be qualified as a no-impact project, and then qualify for an exception under the rules.
And so, what kind of turnaround do you typically have to have to go out and look at that and approve it? What's that time?
We haven't had one come in yet. I would imagine it would be a couple days.
Okay, good.
I think, Councilmember Jones, what would be more appropriate in this context is better managed expectations. I think, given the drainage moratorium by council, staff cannot give you an immediate answer when you walk through the door. So I think we need to publicly eradicate that as an expectation. In order for us to meet your mandate relative to why the drainage moratorium was met, a couple of things have to happen in order for service to be expedited. First, the customer needs to bring in the information that's required. Oftentimes, we don't get drawings. We get something on the back of a napkin. I'm being a little facetious, but they're not the type of drawings from which one can make an informed decision. In a situation like that, we have pledged to provide very good customer service and go out and look at it. As I said to y'all as we were working through this, Jennifer is the only one authorized to give an answer, and she's only authorized to give a yes. If there is a no, then there's a committee internally of Trey, Jerry, myself, and Jennifer, and we're going to go out and evaluate what would it take to be a yes, so that we can set the customer up for success, but more importantly, position you in a place that when they come and ask for that exemption, you have a context with which to grant it. So I think in order to set staff up for success and to set our customer up for success is in order to ensure that your drainage moratorium, which is fundamentally critical, is met, there won't be any permits issued at the counter.
Good. And that's really what I wanted to do, is sort of give a sudden expectation for that. So I appreciate that, Linda. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Are there any other questions for staff or Ms. Bills? Thank you very much, Ms. Bills. All right, we're on item nine eleven. Nine eleven, nine L. I think it's getting late, and I'm getting tired. Consider action to approve resolution number R two oh one eight dash seventy-one of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving an agreement for automatic aid assistance between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop County Emergency Services District Number Two, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and establish an effective date. Chief Alkelt?
Yes. Back in two thousand and nine, this agreement for automatic aid was drafted, reviewed by the Legal Counsel for Emergency Services District Number Two, and to our belief, was executed. And since two thousand and nine, the Bastrop Fire Department, the Bastrop Volunteer Fire Department, in association with the Bastrop Inc., which was the firefighters, and the ESD Number Two operated under these terms. Doing some research last week, I was unable to find a signed and executed document. We could not find one here. The ESD could not find one, and I couldn't find reference to it in the minutes or the agendas back in two thousand and nine. So what I brought before you is a new resolution ratifying all the activities that we've done together in mutual aid since two thousand and nine, and setting forward in September first of this year to continue that mutual aid.
Counsel, any questions for Chief Alkelt?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones.
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Someday, we'll find all of these documents, and we'll quit finding things that aren't signed. I know that's our goal, and I know that's why we're scanning things in. And bless your heart for having to look for all of that stuff. Any other discussion or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief Alkelt. Thank you, counsel. Resolution number R two oh one eight dash seventy-one passes unanimously. We're now on item nine M. Consider action to approve resolution number R two oh one eight dash seven three of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a professional services agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bowie &amp; Company for Public Relations Services, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and establishing an effective date. City manager.
Mayor and council, I provided to you this evening a copy of the resolution and the proposal. In the nine focus areas that y'all approved as support for your vision and mission, one of the nine focus areas includes communication, which y'all have defined as supporting and enhancing open two-way communication between the city and its residents and businesses. You recognized the current workload and capacity of staff and requested the hiring of a public relations team to manage the communication strategy and community outreach associated with building Bastrop, along with ongoing support on an as-needed basis. So there is eighty-four thousand dollars earmarked in Phase One of the codes in the Innovation Fund of the budget that you have for your consideration, and that will cover Phase One of codes of building Bastrop. Also, in the Innovations Fund is a light item called Additional Public Relations Support, and there, I believe, is sixteen thousand dollars in that. Those are funds that personally I hope we don't ever have to spend, because if we don't need to spend it, that means we don't have anything provocative or intriguing going on in the city that needs to be met. So essentially, what this contract is going to do is it provides public relations, community outreach, public involvement, spokesperson training, media relations, anticipating questions, and managing the public engagement process with our code consultant, given our current bandwidth with our staff. So we rely very heavily on Bowie &amp; Company to help create the collateral pieces, the marketing messages. And Sarah O'Brien, as well as Colin Guerrero, work with Bowie's Sarah O'Brien and Patty and others at the firm to make sure that whatever the message is that they've created and been approved reaches our social media devices. So we're bringing this at your request for significantly upping our communication strategy, not only with building Bastrop, but any other issue that we may have.
So, city manager, is there a reason there's not a dollar amount on the resolution?
Yes, ma'am, because it also includes open-ended amount. So while I have sixteen thousand dollars adopted or set aside, if we had an issue that cost more than that, what you're approving by this contract is an hourly weight that we would use as needed. So by adopting this contract, you are allocating eighty-four thousand dollars for building Bastrop, and then an hourly rate for ongoing support as required and as needed.
So you would be, that would be something that would be reported monthly to see if we were using that? Is this an open checkbook, or is this a hundred thousand, and you're going to let us know how it's going?
There's eighty-four thousand that's going for building Bastrop. The sixteen thousand that is set aside for public relations would be an on-as-needed basis. And by virtue of approving the budget as written, you've authorized the hundred thousand dollars for public relations. Beyond that, it would require an amendment to the budget, and you would have to approve that to authorize funds for this.
If it would require an amendment to the budget, then why wouldn't this resolution be for the hundred thousand that ties to the budget?
It could be for a not-to-exceed amount. But what I don't want to do is act like we're going to spend a hundred thousand, when we're only going to spend eighty-four.
Yes. And I agree with that. I would like to see it not to exceed a hundred thousand, or there are eighty-four in the sixteen. Sometimes, these two pieces of paper get separated, and I, counsel, I'm open to other suggestions. I just think it would be clearer if it was included in the resolution.
Yeah.
Counsel, do you have comments on that?
I totally agree with that, because it's without knowing anything. You know, I like to, I know it's going to amend the budget, and the budget says we're only going to spend that, but it feels better to pass something with the numbers in it, at least.
Councilmember Ennis?
I agree.
All right, so, city manager, what's the best way to do that? Pass the resolution with an amendment to add a not-to-exceed?
My suggestion would be is that you authorize approval of resolution number two oh one eight dash seven three, authorizing the agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bowie &amp; Company for Public Relations Services in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Seem very interested? I move to approve. Thank you. Councilmember Rogers makes a motion to approve what the city manager just said, and Councilmember Ennis seconded that. Is there any further discussion? So we'll get a new item to sign off on. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Resolution number R two oh one eight dash... Resolution number R2018-73 with the stated amendments is unanimously approved. We're on item 9M. Consider action to approve resolution number R2018-74 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving a professional services agreement between the City of Bastrop and Simple City Design LLC in the amount of $176,500 for the update of the city's zoning and sign ordinances, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and establishing an effective date. City Manager.
Mayor and Council, we started the process this summer with Phase One, which was under my signature authority, and Phase One hired Simple City Design to come in and do what we are calling coding the DNA of downtown. And essentially what that means is, is that they're spending time out in the field, and they're actually documenting the way downtown has developed. Size of lots, size of houses, setbacks, if you're walking along the sidewalk of downtown, they've measured the amount of window space that is available in a retail facility, roof size, just everything imaginable. One of the things that was so intriguing about getting to meet and understand Simple City Design's process is unlike Austin, who wrote codes hoping that it would work great and look good, what this does is allow us to go code what we know works, and be able to then expand and grow the city of Bastrop based on a proven model that's been in existence for 100-plus years. There's not too many people in too many places that can say they're living in 100-year-old structure, but several of us at the DIAS are currently living in 100-year-plus environments. So what this will do is set the foundation for Phase Two, which y'all have been extremely clear about, and that is, is that you want codes that are financially sustainable and geographically sensitive. I think that it's important for people to appreciate the environment in what is a 4.5 square mile city that we know and love as Bastrop. If you are up on the hill at 20 and, or 21 and Loop 150, you're in four types of sandy soil, you're in the Houston-toad habitat, you come down the hill, and you come into downtown Bastrop, and we focus on historical preservation, restoration. This close to the river, we have different soils than we saw up on the hill at 21 and 150. You cross the river to the west side of the river. It really diminishes, and there's just one or two types of soil, and that side of the river is actually lower than the downtown side. As Councilmember Peterson tells us all the time, we live in a bowl. So it really doesn't work long-term to adopt a one-size-fits-all approach to development. And so what Simple City Design is going to do is take the DNA of downtown that works and help us update our zoning and sign ordinance to be in context with the comprehensive plan that was adopted in November of 2016. And so y'all have been clear, again, in geographically sensitive design, you have been very clear and fiscally sustainable, but you've also underscored a commitment to authentic Bastrop. One of the things that's very important is as we grow, and we all have acknowledged we're going to grow whether we want to or not, that we owe it to our past and our future to protect what's made us Bastrop and ensure that we continue to be Bastrop. So the presentation that, or the contract that you have before you is going to provide an opportunity for Simple City Design to take the coding of the DNA of downtown. They are currently reading every document that we have relative to zoning, to development, they're comparing that to our comprehensive plan. They are going to not only engage you as a council, but do some very out-of-the-box creative engagement with the community in design rodeos and pop-ups. The Planning and Zoning Commission will also be very engaged in this. It's going to be in a couple of steps, and that is, there may be some things that can be approved early on that will make some significant changes and make our life in providing better customer service easy, and you will be given an opportunity to review those in late September, early October. They will continue to refine our codes in hopes that somewhere in early December, there will be a design rodeo where the public will actually get to come and look. One of the things that y'all have said time and time again is how visual folks are. The mayor does a great job when she talks about this in the context that when it's words on the page, if you're visual, they're just words on the page. But we can all look at a picture and go, yep, I like that, or no, I don't like that, and here's why. So the end game is tremendous amount of public participation. At the end of the day, which will be end of February, 1st of March, we will have, what I'm most excited about is codes that persons that don't understand, haven't grown up in city speak, will actually be able to read and understand. They'll be illustrated. So this is the first phase of that that is going to update all of our zoning and our sign ordinances. So let's talk about signs just a moment. Our sign ordinance is many years old. It has been updated several times, but only specific portions. And when you update something in a narrow, specific fashion after a period of time, it becomes a document in conflict. And so what we know is, is the sign ordinance is difficult to interpret and difficult to do business with. So designing, the zoning and the sign codes will be written as a part of, rewritten as a part of this process, and mirror up with all of the principles that have been established in the COT Plan, as well as what you've said as a policy, which is geographically sensitive, as well as financially sustainable. This is Phase One. Phase Two will be presented to you in next year for adoption. There is money in the Innovation Fund for Phase Two. Phase Two will include rewriting all of our design manuals, bringing our trade codes, the building code, plumbing code, electrical code, up to 2018 standards. All of this must work together so that we can address all of the issues that we deal with in that four-and-a-half-mile, square-mile grid that I said was very different...
You've made it smaller.
9.5, I'm sorry, 9.5 square miles. I did the math and see it's kind of four-by-four, and that's the blonde adding in my head. Thank you, Mayor, it's late. So it will help us back up and quit being a one-size-fits-all approach. It will recognize what our opportunities are and provide not only developers, but homeowners with what I hope at the end of the day, we can call a common sense approach. My time here has been very frustrating because staff is not in a position to provide good customer service based on the needs of a community in 2018. And so this is the first step in simplifying our life, making sure our codes mirror our values, and that we can provide great customer service, and make sure when we grow, we protect the very things that are necessary. Matt Lewis is here, and certainly he is way more eloquent at this than I am, and if you have any questions about this, he stands ready to answer them.
Council, do you have any questions for City Manager from Mr. Lewis? I have a couple quick ones, because we got this tonight. Council, you, this resolution number 74 is one of the things that was passed out at the beginning of the meeting. One is, I'm assuming the city attorney has reviewed the contract and is okay with the contract?
Yes, ma'am, I've reviewed it, and I think all the terms are sufficient.
Okay, I just couldn't tell, just wanted to make sure. And then the other, the other question that I have is that we're specifically talking about zoning and sign ordinance. I know Planning and Zoning has been working on revising the subdivision ordinance. Can you address the subdivision ordinance?
Phase Two, and that's the part that we will be bringing in the fall.
Okay, because you had said design manuals and trade codes, and I was listening for subdivision.
That's part of the design manuals.
Okay.
I didn't call it specifically, but that's where all of the design activities rest. So we're going to establish policy with the zoning and sign ordinances, and then we'll mirror up all of the regulatory documents behind that. So when we get to September 31st, or 30th of next year, we're going to have updated zoning ordinance, updated sign ordinance, all of our design standards will be updated, all of the forms will be updated, they'll be online, staff will be, will be trained.
Development process.
Yes, the processes will be flow-chatted, we won't have unnecessary steps, and the end game is the documents that we actually educate developers and the public with will not be the ordinance that you adopt. I know this is a novel concept, but we're actually going to translate it in English, we're going to have pictures with it, so when people get it, they know what to do with it, instead of needing an attorney to decipher what the intent was. There are going to be a lot of intent statements in these, because we all know that no two projects are the same, so what's the intent of what's trying to be achieved here, so we can make that be met.
And this resolution, because it is for a defined contract, the amount, Council, you'll note, is in the first paragraph of the resolution. Councilmember Ennis?
So the phase where you start integrating is going to be another contract?
That is correct, and it is listed in the Innovation Fund separately, and when we get some bandwidth, because we've been working on a $63 million CIP, getting it funded, getting all of this kicked off, so in early fall, we'll bring that contract to you, so that it's seamless, but we're starting at the first step.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Councilmember Rogers, do you have a question?
Okay, maybe I misunderstood what she just said, because I thought if you were going through this contract, the total fee is 176, all the way through Phase One, Two, Three, each one has a total at the bottom, and then at the end, it shows you the total is 176 after Phase Four.
There are four phases to this phase.
There are four phases. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager Matthew Lewis, owner of Simple City Design. There are four phases within this contract scope. The, we are reviewing your subdivision regulations under the code and assessment review right now, and we'll have some recommendations coming out of that, but the overall integration of the code subdivision regulations, development process, your technical criteria manuals, and your code standards will be updated in the next phase, which will be a separate phase of that contract, different contract.
You're planning for this contract with these four phases to be done by March of 2019, is that my understanding?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
And the next contract with the next phases, I assume, how long we think that one's going to, what's your logic?
It's proposed until final completion of all of the manuals and process September of 2020.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Might want to use something besides phase, you might want to go with sections or something.
Is it 2020 or 2019?
For September, let me pull that, I don't have that contract in front of me, I apologize, let me pull it up real quick.
It's a year from now, right?
I know that I brought it.
I believe that is.
That would be helpful if this is Phase One with Part One, Two, and Three.
Yeah, if this is Phase One, it's a little confusing to have four phases in Phase One, you know what I mean?
Sure, we consider this as one contract scope with four phases within the contract. Yes, ma'am, I get you.
Did you get a date on that?
No, I'm still pulling.
Okay. I'm sorry, Councilmember, because we're going to do it separately, I didn't focus on that.
I think what's confusing us is we're calling it four phases in here, and then we're talking about another phase.
Yep.
So I think we need to use some other word for what a part, or we've got one part with four phases, and then we're going to have another part with however many phases, correct?
Yes, and so what I can get Matt to do, if y'all will trust that we'll do this and attach it to the resolution, is that we will mark this the appropriate phase with four parts.
There you go.
So that when it is attached to the resolution, it is clear as to its intent, and then the contract will bring you in the fall, will be Phase Two with multiple parts.
Correct, and the final manual adoption will be December 19.
Okay.
That's correct.
So it will be done by the end of 2019.
He said December 19. That's right.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, Council, any other questions for either the City Manager or for Mr. Lewis? So unlike the Bowie contract that had hourly rates, the sub-phases, parts, sections, the definition inside the contract that's attached to this resolution is essentially like a lumpsum amount.
So we'll guess, it is a, it is a flat rate, he's going to do all of this for $176,500. The contract will be rewritten to be X phase with four parts.
Okay, so it won't matter how many, how long it takes, I mean, how many hours it takes him to get it done.
That's right. That's correct.
Mayor, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve resolution number R2018-74 with the amendments for clarification on phases and sections for $176,500. A second? I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion, Council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Okay, Council, it's 10:04, and we're on item 9O. Consider action to approve resolution number R, thanks very much, Matt, appreciate it. Consider action to approve resolution number R2018-75 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving a professional services agreement between the City of Bastrop and Verdunity Inc. in the amount of $50,000 for a fiscal impact analysis model as attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and establishing an effective date. Council, this is the last document that the city manager passed out prior to the meeting, it's 2018-75.
Mayor and Council, my apologies, in the title of this resolution, the amount of the contract is $50,000, and then the number was $100,000, so it is $50,000, the number should be amended to read $50,000.
Council, she's on line four of what she passed out to us.
One of the interesting things in our comprehensive plan is Goal 2.1, and that is to maintain and enable a policy of measured growth as presented by the Bastrop Conceptual Growth Program. And Action Two, under Goal 2.1 of the comprehensive plan, says to prepare and utilize the fiscal impact analysis tool when determining the value of annexing property, when reviewing proposed development, or other development proposals. You know, one of the interesting things about fiscal impact analysis is they sound good in theory, but they're often hard to replicate, and the reason for that is, is the fiscal impact analysis is only as good as the data that's in it. And so we have been working with Verdunity, Verd is for green, and it's an interesting concept, but nonetheless, Kevin Shepard works with the City of FATE, which we've spent some time looking at the FATE model about fiscal sustainability. These models are fairly expensive to put together because they're very comprehensive. They really become a cost-of-service model internally for an organization, but in order for them to work, you need to understand what the industry is doing, because when you go and you start doing cost-for-replacement, you need to know what cost of replacement is today. And so, you know, concrete might be... And so, you know, concrete might be, you know, $50 a linear foot one year and $65 a linear foot the next year. And so what this fiscal impact analysis proposal is this. We are going to work with the City of Fate and probably one or two other cities that will be various sizes and at various places in their growth. And we'll get a deep discount on the development of this model. And so the question that is always interesting, when you say financially sustainable, is we've got to be able to measure that. We've got to be able to bring you a tool that developers, if they don't like the answer, can dissect it, look at it, and not argue with what it is and how it gets put together. So we will be working with the City of Fate and the other cities to put together this model. And part of the services that Kevin Shepherd's firm will be doing is a subscription service so that every year, he will be out making sure that the calculations for cost of streets and drainage and water and sewer are all updated. So that you are making educated decisions relative to financial sustainability with quality information. You owe that to the developers who've spent time and energy on development, and you need to make sure that you can prove the communication or the commitment to the community. It is not lost on me or staff that fiscal impact analysis tools are data-driven. And so there is a lot of information that's going to be required on us to make this specific to Bastrop. So there is an aspect of every fiscal impact analysis model that between cities won't change. Cost of infrastructure is the cost of infrastructure. But there will need to be something that models it so that it's Bastrop-specific. So this will help us in our journey to get our data straight. So we'll put processes in place, begin to capture the data that we don't have, and it will be an ongoing something. But because you've made the commitment that we're going to have codes that are financially sustainable, we have to have a mechanism that is, just like every other maintenance software we have, has to be updated on an annual basis, has to remain relevant. And we believe that working with the City of Fate and some other cities in the state will help create a model. This is clearly, doesn't exist. You're not the only counsel recognizing that you owe your community fiscal sustainability. So we're partnering with Fate and several others that their policy bodies have also made this choice. So there's some economies of scale. To build this right individually by a city would be significant in an investment, and so by partnering with other cities on a similar journey, we can benefit not only from the economies of scale, but the sharing of their information and their journey as well. So this contract will allow us to do that. I'm sorry. We will have some baseline analysis on existing conditions and be able to benchmark what that Can somebody get me some water?
I think I'm okay. There's a ding-dong down there, too.
One of the cities that Kevin is working with, excuse me, has done a generic fiscal impact analysis, and it already shows that there are about $72 million in the hole relative to long-term build-out.
We're fine. There's a brand new one.
Oh, thank you very much. And so by doing this early and figuring out what projected service costs are in build-out analysis, we can begin to hopefully make some very strategic choices. Because we'll know how the story ends long before the last chapter's written. And so often, cities don't ask that question until it's too late. So Phase Two will allow us to project what our service cost is and our build-out. And then, again, it comes with a subscription model, and we'll be able to tailor it as we get refined in our code and as we get refined in our journey. So we're getting some discounts by doing this at this time and being on the ground floor. And I suspect, as the mayor has said in recent weeks, we have the right to learn as we go. And this exercise, we're going to learn an awful lot about who we are, where we are, and the journey that we have to take. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, this is R2018-75, and it appears, the packet that I got has dash seven five, and then it's followed by another copy of dash seven three. So the seven three.
That is a stapling error.
Yeah, I was going to say, sorry, we're only talking about seven five. Once again, city attorney, is it safe to assume that you've reviewed this contract?
I have not looked specifically at this one. No, ma'am.
Okay. And I also see, and I'm looking through it quickly, that there's clearly a discount if we authorize the start before September 1st, but it appears to me that the deliverable dates for this company is within three to four months. We estimate it to be additional three months. Are there any hard dates that we're going to know when we're going to have something back?
That's going to be dependent on us and our ability to deliver on data that we may or may not have, which is why it's not date-specific. So we're going to meet with them and begin to put together a list. It is not lost on Kevin or us that we need this about March. So we're working fast and furious, but I ask him not to put deliverables in there because I'm fairly sure we're going to be the problem. So I don't want to hold him up for something that I know we can't deliver on. The other reason that we can't give hard dates today is the City of Fate is one that is taking the same agreement to their council. And Kevin is working with a couple of cities in the panhandle, and so there will be some economies of scale. And so we're going to have to take this journey together, and that's part of what the discount is. So that is another reason for kind of a three to four-month window because we've all got to work through this and kind of build it as we go.
So counsel, it's yours to make a motion and consider, but I would suggest that perhaps we might want to approve this resolution with the caveat that the city attorney have an opportunity to review the contract. And also, I think we might want to say that we have an update no later than the first meeting in December to know where we are, how much we've spent, where we are, and what the deliverables are. $50,000, it's not as much as some of the other contracts that we've approved, but I'd like to have a better feel for the scope. I certainly appreciate the fact that not all the data is readily available, but I think counsel would appreciate knowing, and whoever makes the motion, you may decide December's too far out, but I was just trying to kind of do three months. We ought to get a pulse back of how are we doing and when does it look like we're going to have something?
My suggestion, counsel, is just for open and transparency, that you request in October that Kevin come and present where we are relative to the process, the other cities we're working with. I suspect by that time, he can be more definitive on what the timetables are because each city will have gone through an evaluation and not wait till December. So maybe we give you an update in October, we give you an update in December, we give you another update in February. Because I absolutely want this to be open and transparent. It's a very critical aspect of the tool in your toolbox, and personally, I think it will be informative to all of us to appreciate what goes in the model. So we can talk about it as it's being built and have clarity as to how complicated the model is.
Okay, well, I move to approve, subject to it being reviewed by attorney and also by having a presentation by Verd Unity in October.
I have a motion from Councilmember Jones.
Second.
Your light was on, that's why they were all looking at you. I have a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. And is there any further discussion?
Yes, that's why my light was on. It's always a concern being a beta, and that because there's no precedent set, but I'm fully supportive of this project. I just hope that they understand that it's kind of a moving target, some of the data that they want to review is the zoning and subdivision ordinances and what all like that. So I'm hoping that they understand they're going to have to work hand-in-hand, not with our staff, but also with Simple City Designs to ensure that they have as up-to-date data as they can possibly have to give us the true tool that we need.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Nelson. Is there any further discussion on the contract? This is, again, a lump-sum contract, there's no hourly rate, this is what it take, this is what it's going to cost to get done, what's described in the contract.
Regardless of how long it takes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to say is I just, I think that taking this step is fundamental to the premise that this council set forth about being responsible and understand this is a pretty new concept. So I think that that's why I'm personally willing to have a lot of flexibility with moving forward.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Jones. There are a number of fiscal impact models out there, but they're not very specific. So this is, and I absolutely agree with Councilmember Nelson. I'm not a big fan of being a beta site, but I recognize that the criticality of this and what it means. So I appreciate that not only are we going to get to be a part of it, but part of what is got to come out of this is Allen has to be involved in this. Because when you tell a developer who has spent a lot of time and energy in developing a project, and you tell a no because it's not financially sustainable, it's liable to be litigious. And so it's critical that Allen and other city attorneys have a seat at this table, and we argue that as well. And other models you buy don't come with that. So there's a lot at stake. Al and I have talked about this, and so this is an opportunity for us to have a seat at the table and be able to represent to you what we think it is and isn't, and how much of your future you're willing to stake on it.
Councilmember Ennis, were you going to ask a question? Okay. All right, counsel, if there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Counsel, it's 10:20, and the executive session, item 10A, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to confer with city attorney regarding legal advice related to the status of the 1445 inter-local agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop County for the review of subdivision applications in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. The city attorney assured me earlier, we both agreed if it was after midnight, we weren't going to do this, but we will not be back there long, but he would like to give you an update on where we stand on the 1445. It is 10:21, and we are in the executive session. We are back in regular session. There is no action as a result of the executive session, and we are on Councilmember Peterson's favorite item, number 12.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion to adjourn and a second, and we are adjourned. It is 11:13.